Okay, AGP, just waiting for your cue. Okay, good. All right, welcome, everybody. Getting back to business here. Next item on the agenda, item C1 is the review preliminary recommendations for water and sewer rates, approve the Proposition 218 notice, and set August 28, 2018 as the date for a public hearing, and to establish a new water and sewer rates. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Scott Collins, City Manager. I'm going to do a kind of quick pre-presentation. Excuse me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We do need to announce. Thanks, Dana. Councilmember Heding, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. So, Councilmember Heding is onboard for item C1 as noticed. All right, thank you. Hey, just as a way, just kind of a, so John, as you're there, we'll look for Scott to do his presentation, and as always, we'll go through our questions. So, if there's any delay, you know, we'll bear with the delay and try to coordinate everything. So, we'll have your comments, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, Scott, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to give a brief presentation, not going to rely on a PowerPoint tool, because we've provided a similar presentation at the Saturday public forum a couple of weeks ago, and then a triple joint advisory committee meeting a week prior, and then the city council special meeting last Thursday where we went through kind of a broad overview of the WORF project, and also a deep dive into the rates, both for commercial and residential. So, I'll just give a high overview. I know that the community has a lot of questions and want to provide input, and council probably a lot of clarifying questions as well. We want to make sure there's opportunity for council deliberation on the actual Prop 218 notice, in case there's modifications need to be made with that, to that. So, with that in mind, five years of deliberation and discussion, analysis, study on this project, a lot of community input, we are at the precipice of a very important point for this project. City council reviewed the proposed WORF surcharges at their meeting last week, anticipating that surcharges would be necessary to, on top of the existing approved rates, to fund a new WORF facility. As everybody in the community knows, the existing wastewater treatment plant does not meet current regulations with regard to ocean discharge. In addition, the Regional Water Quality Control Board has recently issued a time schedule order, which in essence stipulates the city must meet those requirements, those basic regulatory requirements with regard to water quality within five years. The city can meet that requirement by building a new facility. If it fails to meet that time schedule order, five years, and any kind of preliminary deadlines outlined within that time schedule order, the city will face significant fines. In addition, the project in its current location does not meet California Coastal Commission permit requirements. The Coastal Commission denied the permit in 2013 to build a new facility that would meet Regional Water Quality Control Board regulatory standards in 2013 by a 13-0 vote. Since that time, the Coastal Commission has issued a sea level rise guidance policy document that guides their decision-making with regard to coastal retreat, and specifically calls out wastewater treatment facilities, and that the cities and agencies that govern those should do all they can to move those facilities inland, particularly in building new facilities. So, the city is pursuing a water reclamation facility at the council-directed preferred location of South Bay Boulevard. This WORF facility will replace the existing wastewater treatment plants and provide another source of potable water to augment the city's water security. So, following a staff report and a report from the rate consultant, Alex Handlers of Bartle Wells, last week, the city council directed staff to prepare a Proposition 218 notice to be discussed and considered by city council today, July 10, 2018. We provided a plethora of information with regard to what those WORF surcharges would be for residents. In summary, multi, or single-family homes would all experience a $41 combined WORF surcharge. That would be in addition to the water and sewer rates that were approved in 2015. In essence, for a low-water user, customer, their total water and sewer bill, beginning in July 1, 2019, and a low-water user is a single-family home that consumes two units of water per month, but that means nothing to most folks, that translates to 50 gallons of water per day, that their total water and sewer bill would be $168. A single-family home that consumes an average amount of water, that being five units, which equates to 125 gallons of water per day, would be 191. And a single-family home that consumes a significant amount of water, that's being 10 units or 225 gallons of water per day, would be $233.50. As far as commercial rates are concerned, they would experience a similar percentage increase, though there is fluctuations in how that would be allocated. As we'll discuss a little bit later tonight, we're going to provide opportunities in partnership with Chamber of Commerce to have kind of office hours for commercial businesses to come in and understand what their rates would be moving forward, if they don't understand the graphs that we've provided in the 218 notice. In addition, the city council has directed staff to come back soon with a water and sewer rate review policy. Ultimately, what this is designed to do is, every year, to do a comprehensive review of revenues for water and sewer, as well as the expenditures, and be able to not impose the maximum water and sewer rates or WORF surcharges if we identify cost savings in the project, or receive additional low-interest loans or grants from federal, state agencies. As Alex Handlers presented last week, we are in a prime spot, as far as the state revolving fund is concerned, to receive an additional low-interest loan, somewhere around 2%, which could, in the future, wipe away the regular bond that we would need to fulfill the rest of the project, in addition to the WIFIA, and that could save potentially $5 to $10 per month per customer, which is a significant savings, and city council could make that decision at that time to not impose the full rates on customers. In addition, city council has directed staff to come back with another review of the utility discount program. As the public probably understands, this is a very important program. We're one of only two in the county that provides a discount to utility customers with regard to water and sewer. It's been moved up to 10% for all eligible customers, but there is a July 1 to July 31 enrollment period, and that's more of a pragmatic perspective of understanding what's available in the budget, and being able to plan for how many folks are enrolled. We've really tried to up our effort in terms of getting more people enrolled, because we know there are more eligible customers out there who maybe don't know that they're eligible for this program, and using the PG need care program is a way to be eligible for this. City council wants to consider maybe having a longer enrollment period, or just a rolling enrollment, so in working with the city's community resource, community connections staff, to conduct a more thorough outreach to low-income families that may be qualified for this program. So, that'll come back to city council in August. And probably most important for tonight's purposes is the Proposition 218 process itself. If city council authorizes the release of this Prop 218 notice, staff would put that in the mail this week, and that really initiates the 45-day process when they're received or expected to receive their 218 notices in the mail. This notice would go out to all ratepayers and parcel owners in the Morro Bay community. Sometimes they're one and the same individual, and sometimes they're not. Prop 218 only requires that we send it to parcel owners, but Morro Bay takes it to the next level, understanding that there are ratepayers who aren't parcel owners, who also would be impacted by this, and it's important that they have a voice in the Prop 218 protest process. So, city council will be asked to look at the proposed or draft 218 notice. We will put it up on the screen if we want to do an editing process tonight, which will be interesting, but I think it's important that that, that it's correct. We've gotten a lot of questions from community members and responded to those today, but we can do that deliberative process here tonight to make sure it's appropriate. And then, after that's mailed out, there'd be a 45-day period by which folks can submit written protests to the staff, or to the city, either by mail, or walking it in, or coming to the August 28, 2018, public hearing, which would close, after that item is heard, would close the 45-day period to submit a written protest to the city. We provided the resolution that council approved, attached to the staff report, which guides how that process will be conducted. And it's important to remember that no matter how many property owners or customers are associated with a single parcel, which could include individual units of common interest developments or condos, that we receive water or sewer services, only one protest per parcel will be counted towards the 50-plus, 50% plus one required by the law to stop the surcharge from being imposed. In other words, if a single parcel has multiple folks living there, and we receive multiple protests from that parcel, only one of those would count. The city, understanding that, you know, some of this is pretty straightforward, but maybe not entirely, will be providing resources on the city website, as well as the WORF webpage, and providing office hours to residents to help them understand what their rates would be if this were to move forward. And as was mentioned by Erica with the chamber, we will be partnering with them to provide office hours for commercial ratepayers to understand what their rates would be moving forward. So, in conclusion, the proposed WORF surcharges will fund a new WORF project, which complies with the water quality regulations and coastal act permitting requirements, and provide a local water supply to the Morro Bay community. The rate surcharges are subject to the Prop 218 protest process for disapproval, and the Proposition 218 process will commence on or around Friday, July 13, and conclude with the public hearing currently scheduled for August 28, 2018, at 6:00 PM, in this residence, this facility. So, we know there'll be a lot of questions and deliberation. We're happy to kind of take on any clarifications from the presentation.
Okay, great. So, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions from council, and then, as soon as we're concluded with those questions, we'll let open for public comment, which I think I've got, what, 13, 14 speaker slips, Dana? Something like that. So, I'll start with my left, and if Red could start us off, and then, as we finish that, John, I'll go ahead and make sure that you have, you're involved in the questions as well, so bear with us. Red, if you can lead off with questions.
Sure, thank you. An email from Kathy Quigley asks about the notice that we have on the protest form in Spanish, and it is on the last page of the form, and I wonder if we could not do something more noticeable, something on the very front page that immediately advises the reader what the subject is in Spanish, and how to obtain a Spanish-language form?
Yeah, and that could be, when we go through the deliberation process, we'll make sure to flag that as something that can easily be done, for sure.
Okay. Okay. That's all I -- Okay. I was actually kind of curious what Matt might pick up on that with his Spanish background and teaching credential.
Well, first, I do have a couple of questions, but in terms of the Spanish component, I think, Red, that's a great suggestion, and goes along with what you're saying. Scott, in terms of putting some sort of notice right quick that someone can go to, that would be very useful, because we do have a number of Spanish-language ratepayers here in town. My two questions involve, in terms of, is the utility discount program, Scott, does it apply to the entire bill, including the surcharge?
It currently applies to the entire bill, and will with the WORF surcharge as well.
Got it. So, no, I was quickly doing, okay, I don't want to make a comment out, we'll later. Also, in terms of the enrollment period, right now, we're talking about enrollment period in July that will coincide with the fiscal year, beginning of the fiscal year. Is it possible, or what would have to be done to have it perhaps done twice a year? And that way, people who would go through their various considerations of their financial realities, they could be able to do it maybe mid-year. Jen?
So, in the first meeting in August, we're going to come back with some recommendations. We're going to, we're looking at proposing to trial for one-year rolling enrollment, so a person can enroll throughout the year. The concern with that is, we can't budget an amount, so we don't know if we have enough money coming in, but we do have enough fund balance that we could get through a year, see what, if we can maximize our outreach, and then we could budget accordingly and make adjustments if we needed to for the following fiscal year. But you'll see that in August, and have a chance to give us direction on that, then.
Okay, got it. And then, Scott, one last question, in terms of when you were bringing up the different, when you were introducing the topic, you're talking about ratepayers using two units of water, with their surcharge would be paying $168 a month. That is for using two units of water. And I do believe, is one unit of water, you would subtract 13, 50?
Approximately.
Okay. So, looking at that, then, we're looking at approximately, someone using one unit of water would be approximately $155.
Yeah, thereabouts. And just for clarification, approximately 2/3 of our ratepayers fall to five units or less, in terms of water consumption, so most will feel an impact of 191 water and sewer combined or less.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Marla?
Okay. Just a couple of questions. Some have already been answered. Can you give us some idea of how you might let the public know about the office hours that staff will be having? Would that go out with a rate notice?
Excellent point. We can definitely see if we can fit that into the rate notice. In addition, we'll put out information on the website and contact media to make sure that they push that out. The chamber will be doing their own outreach for the business component to the membership and all businesses beyond their membership.
Okay. Could we consider even sending another postcard if, possibly? I mean, I'm just concerned that we get that message out to people, so that they are aware that the city is willing to help them figure out how much their own rate increase would be, but we will have information on the website.
Information on the website, we'll have the office hours, and then, of course, anybody can contact city staff for further explanation, once we've moved beyond the office hour offerings.
And can I ask you, who got this mailing? Because I know there was, somebody suggested that previously they did not get it. Who did this latest city mailing go to, and who will the Prop 218 go to?
Right. We were notified by a member of the public that a previous mailer didn't reach residents who, gosh, own property, but maybe have, they live somewhere else, or have their mail received in another, outside of Morro Bay, and so the only way to access that is through the county assessor rolls. And so, we did that for the, this mailer that went out. We'll use a similar process for ensuring that anybody who owns a parcel in this community will get a mailer, and anybody who pays a rate in this community will get a mailer, a notice, 218 notice.
Okay. And could you clarify exactly who is eligible to protest the 218? And specifically, renters who do not pay water bills, are they eligible to protest?
It'll be folks who pay, pay the rate, right?
Pay their, pay the bill.
And there's a technical piece that Mayor Public Works Director Rob Lively can fill in, but ultimately, if you're a parcel owner, or if you're a ratepayer, those are the folks who would be able to provide a protest.
Said another way, if your name appears on the county tax assessor's roll as owning property in Morro Bay, you'll get a notice. There may be a few people who wouldn't get noticed, because their property's not developable, but that's a complex, we don't have to talk about that right now. But, and if you are a cust rate, the person who signed the application for water and sewer service --
So, you get a bill? In other words, anybody who gets a bill would be eligible to protest?
Yes.
Okay.
A bill from the city.
Right, right. Exactly. Okay. I think that is all of my questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks. John, are you there? Dr. Heding?
[inaudible]
AGP? Okay. All right, we'll get him back on the line, inevitably. Okay, so, a couple of questions. Are you there? I'll just wait for them. I have, Eric, you and I had a chance to discuss some things earlier today, and these questions are for you. On page 107 of our staff report, I was asking you earlier today, in Table 1, it has a summary of the maximum single-family residents for the WORF facility surcharges. And on this particular one, we have the WIFIA and SRF, but the rest of the document, it's not there, and this one in particular targets the rate at $34 for a surcharge. Can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Sure. So, that was pretty much for informational purposes only. Now, I think we've talked about this at either a public forum, or at a previous council meeting. The issue with not being able to kind of use the SRF assumption in order to, in order to determine the rates, it has to do with timing, and so, there's kind of doing a couple of things here with the rate study and the rate increases. One is, we have to, we have to show we can, we're raising enough money to pay for the program as it's currently structured. We have to prove to the WIFIA folks that indeed, we can pay the loan amount that we're going after. And so, in talking with, and consulting with Alex Handlers from Bartle Wells, we can't go to --
We'll get through this.
Yeah. We can't go to WIFIA and say that we've structured our rates.
Hello?
Hi, John. Hang on a minute, where Eric is just answering a question, and then we'll turn to you for some questions. Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, hang on. Go ahead, Eric.
So, the timing issue is such that we have to, we have to show the folks at WIFIA that we can, the rates are sufficient to be able to support the loan that we want to get from them, and we can't do that, assuming that we're going to get SRF funding for the project. And so, that's the way that we have to structure it, is we, the $41 surcharge is essentially what will cover the balance of, you know, it's, the project's made up of cash, the city would be contributing the WIFIA loan at 49%, the $10 million SRF planning loan that the city already has, and then the remainder, which I believe is around $25 million or so, would be bond financed. Now, that $25 million, what we hope for is that the project moves forward, the city gets the WIFIA loan, uses that in order to get the SRF, and that $41 becomes $34. The only problem is, we're just not going to know that for another 12 to 18 months, likely, because that's kind of how the SRF process works. So, we've got to kind of move forward with the 41, but as soon as the, as soon as the SRF loan, we get the SRF loan, that would open up the door for the 34, essentially.
Okay. And when we, we also approved annual rate review for this purpose, so are we, would, is there any assumptions on when we would have knowledge of SRF during the stage of construction?
Right now, we've been told by the SRF folks that it's probably about a 12 to 18-month process to get kind of final approval, once our application is turned in, so the application is hinging on a couple of things. The, one is the technical package, which a lot of that is already done, the facility master plan information and all that stuff. We have the financial package, which is essentially the rate study, and showing that the, so that we have to get through the rate process first, so we're looking at kind of end of August between, before that would be, that would be completed. And then, the third is the environmental package, which is essentially, that can move forward once the final EIR has been certified, which, again, that looks like that's about a, probably the middle of August. So, the hopes would be beginning of September, through the rate process, final EIR certified, submit that SRF application, and we're going to try our best to move that forward as quickly as we can, but it could be 12 to 18 months after that, before we have a final kind of agreement or a commitment from them. But, the city's in a unique position because of the WIFIA loan. Don't know how that's going to, how that's going to affect things in terms of, that would only help the process in moving the process faster than kind of the normal, the normal speed.
And, go ahead, Scott.
And one clarification, between WIFIA and SRF, WIFIA, we've already gone through kind of a pre-screening application process. We were one of 40 agencies that applied for this very new program, which was launched in 2016. We were one of 12 that were invited to fully apply for the program. We visited Washington DC to talk with their program administrators and high-level administrators for, in the EPA, and they feel we're in a very strong position. We just got our credit rating of an A, which is very good position for a city of our size. So, we have all of our ducks in a row. They've already granted one agreement to one of the 12 agencies. The recent omnibus bill has actually extended more funding to the WIFIA program. They're very excited about our project and ready to move forward. The SRF folks, we've been in close contact with them, either directly or through our consultants who are working on lining that up. We have all of our, everything that we can submit to date, we already have. We'll be working with Senator Manning and Assemblymember Cunningham to do everything we can to get as close to front of the line as possible, so that we would have this funding as soon as possible. Yes, it's a 12 to 18-month process on the long end, but it could be shorter, depending upon how we utilize those resources.
Okay. And then, the next question, Eric, also on Table 1, next to the WIFIA and SRF is a no recycling column, and in that column, it's $44 a month. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, so, the, a lot of questions are coming in about, you know, well, if you just, if you don't do the recycling component of the project, you know, what does that mean to rates? If we don't do recycling, we will not qualify for the WIFIA loan. They're not looking to fund standard projects, they want to fund innovative projects. That's the reason why they've put us in this position. So, we would not have that WIFIA funding, and thus, we would also probably not qualify for SRF funding, so we can expect to, in addition to the cash we have on hand, the rest of it, 90% or more of the project would be funded through conventional bonds, which would actually push the rate up to $44 surcharge per month, but there's also a corresponding reduction in monthly water, water bill of $4.50, just based upon how the project is allocated between sewer and water, because there's a reclamation component. This, and this, if we moved with the no recycling, it'd all be on the sewer, so we could probably reduce a little bit of the water rates. So, ultimately, the community's paying $1.50 more a month to have recycled water as an option moving forward. So, that, that's a decision point. Ultimately, having a water source that could make up 80% of our water needs is probably a good investment for $1.50. As was mentioned before, if we get the SRF loan, that would actually bring down the rate to about $34 per month.
Okay. I'll save my, pardon me, I'll save my other question. John, are you still there, Dr. Heding?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're in questions on this portion of the presentation, so if you have some questions, you want to go ahead?
Scott, for you, specifically, the annual rate review process, is that another 218 vote?
No, it's not another 218 vote, because we wouldn't be seeking to increase rates, which anytime you propose to do that, would require a 218 process. This is after the WORF surcharges would be in place, and after the 2015 rate increases have reached their full, full capacity, that if we receive a SRF loan in a couple of years, we could, council could make the decision not to go to the fully, fully allowed WORF surcharge and water and sewer rates. So, in other words, the rates, instead of being 190 -- So in other words, the rates, instead of being 191 for the average user, could be 185 or less if the SRF loan is received in the future. But the annual rate review would not be used as a tool to increase rates.
And it cannot be used as a tool to increase rates because of the Prop 218 requirements. Additionally, we cannot charge more than the reasonable cost for operating the utility. So I think that the annual rate review is a necessary process to go through to make sure that the rates are right-sized for operation of our utility.
Any other questions, John? Darn. I've got a question for you. Maybe we'll get John back on the line. We're going to tag-team some of this and then get to questions. Eric, there are some questions about groundwater and the feasibility of that. And can you compare and contrast the City of Pismo Beach and what they're going through right now and how that compares to our project?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Just in full disclosure, one of the other hats that I wear is I'm the project manager for the treatment of, the treatment component of that Pismo Beach, or Co-Pismo Beach, South San Luis Obispo County Sanitation District project. It's a potable reuse project. Again, a full advanced treatment, much like the City of Morro Bay, and then injection of that water into the Santa Maria groundwater basin. So again, like this project, there has been some initial hydrogeological work to determine if the minimum groundwater travel times can be met, but there's ongoing geotechnical work that's being done currently that's looking at, again, exactly how much can the groundwater basin take before that water's just being pushed out to the ocean? And you're essentially investing money to treat water that's not giving you any more benefit? And then the other thing is where's the best injection location? And so it draws a pretty good parallel to the City of Morro Bay where there's been an initial feasibility study that's been done, has demonstrated that under numerous scenarios, about 800 acre feet could be put into the ground and extracted, and could be put into the ground and extracted and meet the two-month travel time. The additional hydrogeologic work that we need to do is one, to figure out if that's 850, if it's 900, what exactly that right number is. And then the other one is what's the best location? Is it east of the highway, is it west of the highway, depending on soil conditions and those kinds of things? What's the most effective way to do it? So pretty close in terms of how we stack up with those folks down in South County.
And has Pismo and the City of Pismo, is that a single project or is that a joint project with others?
It's a joint project with member agencies of the South San Luis Obispo County Sanitation District and Pismo. It's a two-phased project. The project started a number of years ago, and it was a Pismo-only project, so centered around just using the effluent, the secondary effluent that's currently produced by the Pismo wastewater treatment plant and injecting that into the groundwater basin. But because those agencies share common infrastructure and the outfall and in that groundwater basin, the decision was made, I'll go back, probably about a year ago, to kind of partner up and make it a larger project. So the first phase is just looking at Pismo Beach-only flows, and then Phase 2 would be combined Pismo and South San Luis Obispo County flows.
Okay, thanks. John, are you there?
I think I'm here.
Okay, did you have any more questions?
Yeah, I did. Just one more question. Scott, with regard to the annual rate review, if the 218 were to move forward and pass, the annual review process really caps the upside in terms of ratepayer costs and then allows for a decrease in rates because of the frequent annual review if the components of costs decrease. So it caps the upside, but allows for a downside with regard to reduction in rates. Is that correct?
The cap is established by the 218 process, and the annual rate review would be anything lower than that, right? I mean, that would be the ultimate decision or a reinvestment of those funds into other things like capital.
I guess the easy way to ask it is that...
Yes, that's correct. Sorry.
Yes, okay, good. No further questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, Stan?
Could I ask just one clarifying, just a clarifying question?
Go ahead, Alex.
A clarifying question for Eric. Speaking about the Pismo project, because this has come up previously and there was a comparison of costs, they already have a wastewater treatment plant, correct? So their project is just for the recycling component?
That's correct.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that because somebody mentioned before the cost comparison.
All right. John, stay on the line. We're going to start with public comment, and we have a number of comments left. First one up is Kathy Quigley.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, for quickly using my idea and putting it forward. I appreciate it. It feels good to have it go so quickly. I'm speaking on item C1 and specifically on the draft Proposition 218 notice that you're looking at tonight. A new revised draft protest ballot is included in this notice. This newest ballot, different from the one I picked up two weeks ago at City Hall, uses the word "surcharge" instead of "rate." Well, the notice of a public hearing that you are considering approving tonight uses the words "surcharge" and "rate surcharge" almost exclusively. This is at odds with your previous notices and flyers sent out to inform residents. For example, Resolution Number 4418 sets the guidelines for the city's Prop 218 protest and was approved and adopted on June 13th. A review of this document shows that the word "rate" is used 25 times. The word "surcharge" is not used at all. Your most recent mailer, and that was up here earlier today, this evening, the most recent mailer titled "Important Water and Sewer Update" uses "rate" and "flat rate" to describe what residents will see on their bills if an increase is passed. No mention of "surcharge" here either. In fact, today, this afternoon, before I came, I went to the city's website, and on the homepage, under Hot Topics, is the article "Water and Sewer Draft Rate Study Released." In this short article, I found the following terms: ratepayer, rate consultant, rate impact, rate analysis, and previously approved rates. "Surcharge" is not used here, and this is where residents can go to get information. A lot of time has been spent on trying to educate the residents about the project and the processes needed to pay for it. We have become familiar with these terms: sewer rates, water rates, rate studies, rate increases. "Surcharge" has just recently been added to this vocabulary of increased sewer and water costs. Why are you changing vocabulary on notices and documents that go out to the public at this crucial time? Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Aaron Oaks.
Good evening, members of the council and staff, and I hope our absent council members join his slot machines down in Vegas. I come with prepared remarks for the council and to residents watching at home. Under California Proposition 218, our city has the authority to administer the notice and protest process. However, the city is also required to conduct this process legally. We don't believe they have. Three years ago, the city held Prop 218 water and sewer rate hikes to pay for a wastewater treatment facility at Rancho Colina. Then they told us the $75 million we approved would pay for the project, and in one fact sheet, talked about guaranteed maximum cost. Now, city officials admit the process was essentially frivolous with regard to paying for a project, with ratepayers voting on conceptual engineering estimates, not actual cost. Now the city is asking ratepayers to raise rates based on approximations and estimates for a project that's twice the cost. This is illegal. California statute and case law prohibits property-related fee assessments from being levied based on mere assessments. The city reminds us that, unlike the 2015 vote, we're further along the design-build process. But now the stakes are much higher. The risk for litigation for legally corrupting the Prop 218 process is much higher. The erosion of public trust is much higher. Voting no on the 218 will send a reality check to the city. After five years of city-led delays, residents simply can't afford this project. We want a compliant project, but not at any cost. Save Morro Bay believes a more comprehensive Prop 218 process should be held when new leadership is elected. And my question to the council is, with regard to the SRF, will they require a cost-effective project? I don't believe that we have a cost-effective project in front of us. We need to lower the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Brannon.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff, and city council, city manager. This is a tremendous project that you've put together, and I really want to commend you because it's got a lot of issues. And we're to the point now that you're sending out your notice, and the very fact that you're putting a ballot in your notice, I think, is wonderful. I have one issue with your ballot down at the bottom. It says, although no explanation for a protest is required, the city would appreciate any comments or input you would like to share regarding the reasons for submitting a protest. I think it's a good thing to write up in the upper body, but when you put that on the protest, that's actually kind of daunting for someone. You're challenging why they're protesting, and I think that's totally inappropriate, and it should not, in my opinion, be on the ballot. But basically, good luck to you. We're going to have a lot of fun the next six weeks.
Dan Sedley.
My name is Dan Sedley. I live in Morro Bay. First, I wanted to talk about, I looked at the city website in regards to the agenda, and I saw comments there in an email from Betty Winholz, and I want to say that I fully agree with her comments, and I hope that her issues will be addressed by the city Next, I have been afforded an honor and privilege to walk miles of Morro Bay city streets and to talk to numerous, numerous residents. And aside from two people that I've heard tonight that support this project, I've been told time and time and time again, I cannot afford this. I've talked to single parents, I've talked to young working couples, I've talked to older people in retirement, and they said, we've been undergoing steady rate increases since 2015, and yet here's another one. I can't afford it. My social security doesn't go up that much. Our family income doesn't go up that much. Everything is going up: gasoline, water, everything. It's easy to say prioritize, prioritize, but they have to get to work, and their family has to drink water, and they have to bathe, and they don't know where the money is going to come from. They're concerned. They love Morro Bay, but they say, we're being driven out. For them, this is a pocketbook issue. It's not if they're conservative or liberal or any other title. It's a pocketbook issue for them, and they intend to vote their pocketbook. They're saying, where is the ballot that I can say, we need a more economical option? Because this is not it for me. I can't pay $168, I can't pay $191, and I can't pay $232 for water and sewer, regardless of how you want to title it as a rate or as a surcharge. I don't really understand that, but that's not my issue. Is this, I have a question. Is the city council willing to guarantee that this is the totality of increases that we are going to see? The people want to know, what is it exactly that we're going to pay for this project? Is this the last of it? Is this the totality of it? Or is there more? We want to know, we think we deserve to know, what is the total expense of this project? Don't tell us one step at a time, please. Please tell us the totality of these steps and what they will be. Does it include, until the plant's fully functioning, destruction of the old plant? What is the total cost? They want to know. It's been a pleasure to talk to so many residents of Morro Bay and to hear what they say. They've received these cards, so I can understand how some people may not get them because of where they live and whatnot, but they're getting them, and they are very concerned.
Thanks, Dan. Next up is Carol Truesdale.
Thank you for hearing me.
All right. Thank you. Carol Truesdale.
Good evening, council, city staff, etc. Thank you, Scott Collins, and Jen and your staff, for the long hours you've spent designing and creative financing. You have come up with a new Prop 218 request. I'm Carol Truesdale and have lived in Morro Bay since 1995 and am homeowner. I want to go on again on record as follows. In 2015, residents were led to believe they were voting for a rate increase that would fully cover the cost of a new plant. However, less than three years later, the city's back asking for more money to fund an even more expensive WRF project, being built in the wrong place and is the wrong size for this community. In fact, the potential destruction of consecrated ground is imminent if this project goes through, and that is unfathomable. At the August 8, 2017 meeting, almost one year ago, I stood before this council and told them that I felt duped, based on the information provided to me in the last Prop 218. It was close to midnight. I read my document as fast as I'm reading now and was laughed at by Mr. Leibich. I left because I was tired and I had waited all that time to speak. This is a direct translation from that meeting in response to my comments, and the following exchange took place between council member McPherson and Public Works Director Rob Leibich. McPherson, I was serving on the PWAAB at the time we passed that rate increase, and as I recall, the rate increase itself, we were planning on getting a loan, and so the rate increase was to pay back on that loan for five years that the rates were in effect. So that's what the rate increase covered. Is that correct, Rob? That's my recollection. Leibich, yes, the project was going to run, the project would be built through loan funding, and the rate increase would pay that back. McPherson, right. And Leibich said, similar to what? McPherson says, exactly, but that would cover, that would be like over 30 years. Leibich, 30 years. McPherson, and so this was the only first five years. Leibich, right. I think if you look at Craig's spreadsheet, it shows we don't let alone have $75 million in the wastewater fund bank. We don't even have $56 million yet because that was going to come over the next 30 years. McPherson, right. Leibich, we can't expect the community to fund a 75, 70, or 75, $6 million project in five years. McPherson, right. Leibich, it would be impossible. McPherson, thank you. The discussion makes it clear that the city never intended that the 2015 rate increase would be the last one. There's no reason to expect anything different should the council get its correctly proposed increase. The city Morro Bay leaders have demonstrated that it will promise residents the lower WRF costs, only later reneg on this promises. So again, you know, here I am, a year later, and I'm talking to you again. Some of you I voted for, some of I didn't, but I'm sorry, guys. This is wrong.
Eric Four.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Eric Four. I live in Morro Bay, and this is going to be interesting because I forgot my reading glasses. Before you start the clock on the current Prop 218 protest vote, I request you and your staff answer five questions that the citizens have a right to know. Please allow me the time tonight to ask all five questions. One, who is using our present sewer plant?
You.
Using your numbers... Using your numbers, there are 5,600 parcels in the city that are using an average of five units of water per month, or 125 gallons per day. 5,600 times 125 gallons per day equals .7 million gallons per day. Your graph of our plant's volume without Cayucus indicates it processes 1.2 million gallons per day on a daily basis, often more. 1.2 minus .7 equals .5 million gallons per day. Where is this extra .5 million gallons per day coming from? If we, the citizens, are producing 58% of the present volume, who is contributing the other 2, other 42%? Number two, what is the maximum design volume of the new facility? How have you determined that number? If 12,500 citizens will eventually contribute .84 million gallons per day, how have you calculated the additional size that you intend to build for? How many people do you expect to use the Morro Bay system at maximum use? Are you designing the system to be oversized in the future? Number three, who will pay for the cost of the new plant? Should we not pay for a new plant based according to our use? If we, the citizens, are using 58% of the present volume, why should we pay for more than 58% of a new facility? Will the council please investigate who is producing the other 42%? When that sector has been identified, will the council please, please adjust the project's billing to reflect that all the users of Morro Bay facilities pay their fair and full share of the project? Number four, why have you not considered adjusting the present sewer rate structure to reflect the parcel's volumetric use? Why is one sewer unit billed at the same rate as 10 sewer units? That is unfair to minimum users and does not promote conservation. Number five, how much will the new sewer project cost? You have stated the contractor's price, but what will the total cost be, including the financial charges on a yearly basis and over the entire life of the debt? Is that period to be 30 years? What additional cost do you project but have not included in the present estimate? Do you expect, and have you put in writing, that our rates will pay the total cost and that you will not demand higher rates in the future? How can you expect the citizens to agree to pay for the project when you have not produced the total numbers, or what percent of the total cost the citizens are being mandated to pay?
Eric Four, thank you. If you submit the questions, they'll answer it when we're done. And the next one up is Carolyn Brinkman.
Please follow the advice of your own Blue Ribbon Commission.
Please respect the public comment period for the next speaker, who is Carolyn Brinkman, if you'll please come up.
Add your name to this meeting and move it to August 14, as your Ribbon Commission suggested.
Thank you. Carolyn Brinkman, please. Eric, do you want to submit your questions over here, so they can follow up on?
I'm already, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, this may be underwhelming after that. I'm going to speak tonight, Carolyn Brinkman, Morro Bay resident. Good evening, everyone, again. I'm going to speak to the draft of what will go out with the ballot. It's titled, Notice of Public Hearing on a Proposed Water and Sewer Rate Surcharges to Support a New Water Reclamation Facility. I'm actually going to, I taught college English for 32 years, so I'm going to talk about pronoun reference. So hold on to your seats, folks. The document includes the city's rationale for building a new water reclamation facility at a new site and the rationale for the new water sewer rate. My concern is with the statement towards the end of the ballot, and you can see it on the screen. It reads, "I certify, I have personal knowledge of all the foregoing, and it is true and correct." To what does "it" refer? That matters, and it should be made clear. Does it refer to everything in the four pages that precede the ballot? Are you asking that everybody sign that they certify that they have personal knowledge of all the foregoing four pages, and that they certify that everything in those first four pages is true and correct? If everyone could certify that the city's rationale for the WRF and the rationale for the rate increase was true and correct, then how could people vote no and still sign the ballot? That is a problem. If the word "it" refers just to the information the voter has provided on the ballot, then why would you include "I certify, I have personal and personal knowledge of all the foregoing"? Why not just say, "I certify that all the information I have provided on the ballot is true and correct"? Otherwise, the statement sounds like a threat, and that is not good. So you've got your grammar lesson for the...
Thanks, Glenn Silaway.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Silaway, resident of Morro Bay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, my fellow residents. I speak here tonight to support the city's rate increase, and I ask all Morro Bay residents to do the same. I think that people opposing the rate increase are gambling with our future and with our money. The first step in Cal's Plan B is to convince the Coastal Commission to allow a significant upgrade or new plant on the beach. That won't happen. Residents are being misled by being told that it's possible, and even that it's easy. It's not, and it won't be. It won't happen. Take a look at the last time the city asked the Coastal Commission to permit a plant on the beach. This is a bit of history. The city published a draft EIR for the plant on the beach in September 2010. In November 2010, Madeline Cavallari of the Coastal Commission wrote to the city citing significant local coastal plan site and site problems, asking for an alternative site evaluation. In January 2011, the newly-elected City Council overrode a planning commission recommendation and approved the plan. Many Morro Bay residents, some of whom are in this room, appealed that decision to the Coastal Commission. During 2011 and 2012, there were numerous exchanges between the city and the Coastal Commission, with the city trying to address concerns raised by the staff. In July 2012, the Coastal Commission's staff issued its report recommending denial of the plant on the beach. In August 2012, the city issued a very lengthy rebuttal. As of October 2012, the city and Cayucus had spent $144,000 on lobbyist Susan McCabe trying to convince coastal commissioners to support the plan on the beach. And in January 2013, the commission voted 13 to 0 to deny the plant. It is simply not true that the city never tried to convince the Coastal Commission to build a plant on the beach. It's a myth. It tried very hard, it did not succeed. It will not succeed the next time they try. And what happens when we do that is that the cost will go up. The Coastal Commission is harder to convince now than it was before. As Scott Collins said, they're more concerned about coastal hazards. They have a stated policy of managed retreat to mitigate the dangers of major infrastructure being overwhelmed. It's time to move the sewer, and the longer we delay, the more it's going to cost the ratepayers we don't want to hurt. It's not going to save them in the very near term, two, three years down the road, they're going to be paying more if we don't do it now. It's our turn, let's step up to the plate and do it.
Thank you. Ahmed Qasim. Sorry, Ahmed, I'm not doing your last name a very good job, but thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. City Council, I am a resident of Morro Bay, and I came here in 2009, and I attended many, many, many sessions about the WRF. And I, at this point, think that we should go ahead and let the payers decide. I think it will pass, and I think we should build our plant and get it over with. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thanks, Ahmed. David Nelson.
Hi, David Nelson. I'll read something here for you. The Morro Bay City Council thinks, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses either, it can raise rates and sewer rates for a wastewater reclamation plant without telling anyone how much it will actually cost. What I'm getting to here is Proposition 218, which prohibits the city from raising rates based on estimates and assumptions of a project's cost. Prop 218 is an amendment to the California Constitution requiring that revenues derived from the fees or charges shall not exceed the funds required to provide the property-related services. To identify funds required, the city must determine the actual cost of the construction and operation of the proposed wastewater reclamation facility, and then calculate the actual amount of the rate increases that do not exceed those costs. The court case has explained in 2015 case Capistrano Taxpayers Association versus City of San Juan Capistrano. And the city planned to build a water recycle plant. The court held that the California Constitution does require they figure out the true cost of the water. That was on page 1511 of that. And Prop 218 requires public water agencies to calculate the actual cost of providing water at a very, various levels of usage. And that, too, is in that court finding. Morro Bay City Council members know that the law requires them to calculate actual costs based on project design and projections of real data. The earlier May 26, 2015 rate increase, staff reported rightly states that a tiered rate structure unsupported by actual cost of service calculations for each, for each tier is unconstitutional. As a result, tiers rate structures may be vulnerable to challenge to the extent that they are not tiered to identifiable increment cost correcting to the tiers.
Thanks, David.
That's over already?
Yep. Betty Winholz.
Betty Winholz, and I did submit my questions and comments earlier, but I want to highlight five of those that relate specifically to the document itself, the document being which you're sending to the ratepayers, and also the subsequent resolution. So the ones, if you have my document, it's number 19, page 177. I think this is a critical piece of information. It says that there will be billed per residential dwelling unit. So my example is, if I live in a duplex and we have one meter, then there's one vote. But does this mean you have a right to charge us double for the surcharge? And yet two people don't get to vote. So I have a real issue with understanding and want to know what it means that you're going to be billing us per dwelling unit. So if I'm in a five apartment, five-unit apartment building, will each of those five units get the surcharge because they're separate dwelling units? Or do you need to fix the language? So I'd like that answered. Number 20, page 178, it again talks about identify the affected property or properties. Are we going back to saying more than one owner who, if they have more than one property, can be listed on one piece of paper, or do we need to have separate sheets of paper? If you would clarify that. Number three is my number, number 24, it's on page 183. I've asked this before and have not received an answer, and the way you've set it up in the document tonight, that you don't have to tell us until the night of the rate hearing. But will the city's properties, will the parcels be counted as part of the total base number of how many you're counting? So we don't know right now what's 50 plus one, unless we know whether you're counting those city properties. I'd like to respond to the idea that, a couple of things. One, about letting Quintana and other businesses know about your office hours, I think is real important. But know that you're saying, or someone said, that $1.50 more for recycling, that $1.50 for doing the recycling, tearing up both sides of Quintana and probably the roundabout, that $1.50 will cost all those businesses. You're ripping up people's lives because you're taking away their businesses. And I know that you said in the previous meeting, oh, it's just going to be, or it's maybe in the report, oh, it's only going to be two to three months that we'll be ripping up Quintana. But when Caltrans ripped up the intersection of South Bay Boulevard and Highway 1 a couple years ago, they said two to three months, it was six months. So it's hard to believe that it's only going to be six months that these businesses are going to be harmed. And once you lose business, it's really hard to get them back, because our people who stop at Albertson's, they're going to be doing their shopping in San Luis. They're not going to be shopping in Morro Bay anymore. Another point.
Thanks, Betty. Rob Kitzman.
Cynthia Hawley.
Cynthia Hawley, I've learned that the council does not listen or act according to the laws. And there's a good example of a violation of Penal Code 115, which makes falsification of public record documents a felony. This dovetails with the Morro Bay Action Team's ongoing request to verify motions by reading them back. And the reason for this is for accountability, so they won't be changed behind closed doors. At the April 25, 2017 meeting, the council voted on Councilmember Heddings' motion, which you see over there, that was transcribed as purely building and concentrating on a wastewater treatment facility. And we shouldn't be looking at costs associated with building on that site other than wastewater treatment facility. How it showed up in the minutes, however, and this is the public record, is that direct staff to focus solely on building a treatment plant on that site. A treatment plant, oh, and then after that, Ms. McPherson said, I fully agree with that, absolutely. Mayor Irons said, we need a motion for that. Mr. Heddings said, so moved. Mayor seconded it. It passed unanimously. A treatment plant includes reclamation, and this motion was falsified to change the meaning drastically when the council voted to proceed with wastewater treatment only and to spend money on wastewater treatment only. And behind closed doors, the motion was changed to bring water reclamation back as part of the project, and here we are tonight. What you violated here is not just felony under the penal code, which you all approved, you also violated the trust of the community. It's apropos to bring this out tonight, since you are poised to raise the rates based on the falsification of the action that was taken on April 25, 2017, to eliminate reclamation and from that project, from that project to build only wastewater treatment. The authority you are relying on to go forward contracting and raising rates to build the reclamation plant is based on this falsified motion.
David Batant.
Mayor and Council members, my name is David Batant. I'm a resident of Morro Bay and a utility customer. I support the city's water reclamation facility project at the South Bay Boulevard location and the proposed water and sewer surcharges to pay for it. I'm concerned that delaying the project yet again to consider alternative locations and technologies will result in higher cost utility ratepayers than the city's proposed project and surcharges. Further delay and removing water reclamation from the project risks higher costs from the loss of low-interest-rate financing and grant opportunities. Construction... the loss of low-interest rate financing and grant opportunities, construction cost inflation, and facility redesigns for some other location and technology. The Coastal Commission members and staff have made their position abundantly clear by discouraging a project location west of Highway 1 and encouraging an inland location removed from coastal hazards. In my opinion, it's foolish for Morro Bay to attempt to impose its will on the Coastal Commission to approve a treatment plant at a West Side location like the Old Hanson Concrete Site and a project that doesn't include recycling effluent for potable reuse. I want to see my ratepayer dollars used to build a new WRF project and to refurbish our water delivery and sewer collection systems, not squandered on attorney and lobbyist fees to fight with the Coastal Commission or on water board fines because we failed to fulfill our commitment to replace existing treatment plant. The proposed WRF project is an opportunity for Morro Bay to assure a viable future for its residents, property owners, and businesses by properly treating our waste before discharge into the ocean and by providing another source of community drinking water. I ask the council to approve the proposed water and sewer surcharge to finance the WRF and authorize the Prop 218 process and public hearing as recommended by staff. Thank you.
Bill Martoni?
Good evening again, Bill Martoni, Morro Bay. One quick question, and that is on the 218 vote, there's tax parcels, there's legal parcels, and I'm not sure if you have like three legal parcels, but it's only under one tax parcel. Do you have three votes or only one? And I know tax parcels, or I've seen tax parcels where there's a postage stamp next to us, it's probably 15 foot by 15 foot by 15 foot, that's a tax parcel, but would never be a legal parcel. So that's just one point. If we're going by legal parcels and tax parcels, they're not always one in the same. And so probably need some clarity whether you have a vote for legal parcel or a vote for tax parcel. Okay. The one thing I wanted to bring up was, as far as the actual location of the South Bay for building the plant, it's probably not the ideal location, but it's not a bad location. Originally, I was thinking that the cost of pumping the wastewater from where it is now over to South Bay would be a lot of money, until I checked into it, found out the pumping costs, their estimate was like $48,000 a year. I've mentioned it in the past. Your pumping costs, if it costs $1 million a year to run the plant, are virtually nil. So I mean, the pumping cost is not your issue. I'm against actually building it next to, or you know, duplicating it next to the high school. I think that horse has left the barn, and I don't think that's the ideal location for it. That said, my biggest complaint is the cost. And I think maybe in your bid process, the way it was written, I think we ended up with limited people in the bid process able to bid on it, and we may have shot ourselves in the foot on the bidding process on getting a lower cost. As far as, if the plant itself is going to cost approximately $70 million, I think that's more than it should have cost, but let's leave that figure $70 million. The pipeline and offsites, I understood were going to maybe be a maximum of another $10 million. They probably should only be three to five. That said, your still, your guesstimate of $125, $106 million is still about $45 million higher than I think it should even come in at. So as far as a Prop 218 vote, I think if you get it down to a price where everyone can live with, I mean, forget the location, forget the pipeline and that, it's all in the cost. And I think the cost can be drastically reduced, and you can end up with the same product in the end, and the ratepayers can afford it. So I think what we really need to do is see if there's a way to, and I know everyone's hammered this, to actually get the cost down. The pipeline, the offsites, Forest Main is like three to $5 million. So anyway, I'll quit at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker is Kristin Hedlund.
Kristin Hedlund, 28-year resident of North Morro Bay. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. For me, I walk the neighborhood in North Morro Bay. I've spoken to a lot of residents, and I come across family members, retired people, and they're all concerned about their water and sewer bill going up. So my concern is that this letter that gets sent out to them, could it be made in a very simple, easy fashion so they can understand it? I myself sat down, went through it, had to ask my husband a couple of questions. And so this item over here, how it shows the rate schedule for tiers that you use, the units that you use, I would like to have that incorporated in this document. And also, I'm concerned for the Hispanic population we have here in Morro Bay. I think that maybe you should make a double side where it's English on the front and Spanish on the back. They do that at the schools. I think that you have a lot of families that are very busy, and I just cannot see these people coming into your office during business hours, trying to find someone who speaks Spanish, to ask them, "May I please have a ballot?" And my next question is, is the resolution going to be mailed along with this front section so that people can read the entire document? I want to thank you all for your hard work. For Dana, she's very good. Whenever you contact her by email or phone call, she's always very responsive. I'm very grateful that everyone is putting their best to make this project. I would like to see the price come down. I think it's too much for our residents. And I agree with the last speaker. I think if you bring the price down, people will be happy. But right now, the price is just too high. I appreciate Anne Marie speaking in Spanish. Shout to the telephone, the television YouTube people so that the Hispanic population can hear and understand what's going on here with the rate increase that will affect them. And I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrigan Mahan?
Good evening, City Council staff. Carrigan Mahan, resident. There's not much I can add. So much of what's been said, I had written down, so you know, there's nothing I can say to stop this. It's a, you know, it's a runaway train, it would appear. You're hell-bent to pursue this. I think we probably want to correct the spelling of sew wars, ironically. Sew war rates, war rates. As long as we're on English, a little added English on that. I don't know where the few folks that have spoken think it's okay to pursue this project. It is, it is absolutely too much money. It's just too much money. I think we're premature with the 218. I don't think the project's ready for any of this. I hope we can defeat it. As far as the Hanson site goes, you know, for Glenn to say it's an app like God, I mean, he's not God. We don't know for a fact what the Coastal Commission is or isn't going to do. I actually was thinking we could conceivably, I'd love to see this whole thing stop, just shut it down. But I've said that for a year. I think we're in over our heads. I think we're in for big trouble on so many fronts. I think the town is going to be ripped, just ripped to pieces physically. And I think there will be overruns. We're dealing with Black and Veatch, and we're Little Morro Bay, and we're not doing proper vetting. There's a lot of vetting I'm doing here with these people that are surrounding me. And there's a lot of stuff that isn't discussed. We need to do better vetting. Black and Veatch is world power. They crush us when they choose. They have overruns. We don't have any guarantees of any kind. It's ridiculous. It's stupid. So a two-prong, Hanson and Gianini is actually the best choice if it wasn't Hanson. And I don't think South Bay is a good choice at all, as do many people feel this way. It's too far. It's uphill. It's going to create a lot of problems. So, but that's getting into the weeds. I don't know. I feel like we kind of got a dog and pony show on a semi-monthly basis meets Three Card Money, and I'd love to see this thing stopped. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrigan. Nancy Bast?
Good evening, council and audience, wherever you are. I got this city card on Saturday, and I think there's parts of it that needs to be enlarged so people out there can have a little more knowledge about what's going on. First of all, I think the sentence, "Securing the WIFI alone adds value to residents by providing a significant water supply benefit to the community at a nominal cost on the order of $1.50 per month per taxpayer, ratepayer." I think that's, I don't even understand that, so I don't know how they could out there. And then, because I've been here a bunch of times, and then it says, "receive of proposals for the main element of the program is a substantial figure." But what about the other half of the program? The piping and the lift station and the injection wells? You have no kind of a figure for that. So the final rates on July 10th that you're going to enact tonight, and I'm sure you will, because you don't have a choice, because you're going to make this application to the WIFI alone in a week. And so you have to do this. You've backed everybody into a corner. But how can these final, how can you know these final rates when you only know the cost of half of the project? The other thing I want to talk about is, it says that you've found an area compatible with surrounding land uses. 360 feet away from this treatment plant that's going to have to be built for two and a half years, and I don't know, I forgot the figure, 7,000 heavy truck trips. There's 190 people that live 360 feet away from this plant and the two and a half years of noise, pollution. They're the most fragile and vulnerable people in our town. Are they throwaways? Apparently, they are. There's also 210 people that care for those people. And they have to park somewhere. And you're going to put this line on Teresa Drive, turn the corner, and go up and back of the facility, the retirement facility. 210 people work there. Where are they going to park? That's a very confined area. None of this has been spelled out in the DEIR or the final draft. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Bob Keller?
Mayor, City Council staff, name's Bob Keller, resident of Morro Bay. I support and approve C1, and would have the council move on with a 218 notice. And to, because if we have any more delays with this, it will only cause more chaos. So we have to move on with this, whether we like it or not. Anyway, I had a lot of notes here, but some of my fellow speakers have already covered what I wanted to say. And Glenn Sellaway said a lot of it. Bill Martoni, I've known him for a long time and worked with him, and I'm with him on the cost. I've always been talking about cost and funding. That's been my two priorities on this whole project. I know sometimes we can't get the cost down, but if we could get it down, it would all help all ratepayers, because I'm one of them. But anyway, the reason we've had this cost go up is because nobody wants it in their backyard. No one, not even the Coastal Commission, and the high school, and the residents around it, and the businesses around it. So this is why we're in the situation we are now. And I hate to say it, but we have to bite the bullet, because if we don't move on and this project stops, what will the cost be in the future for our families, extended families, kids, grandkids? We have a beautiful city here in Morro Bay. And I know it's hard on a lot of people, but if we could just kind of cut down some of our extracurricular activities, like stuff that we don't need, maybe, because this is a want. Sewer and water is a want. It's not, I mean, it's a need. Sorry. It's a need. It's not a want. So we should just try to do the best we can, work together as a city, not tear each other apart, but to work together and do the best we can to move this project on, because delays will only get more costly. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Lynda Donnelly?
I have a couple of questions or statements, I'm not sure. So this report for Item C1 was, began on page 97. For the people in the audience, Item C1 went to page 184. On page 182, Section 8, I'm going to speak to the part about the city clerk. The city clerk shall not accept as valid any protest if she, he determines any of the following are true. And then it goes on about a, the protest does not conform to any of the requirements of this resolution or, and then one, two, and three, I believe. That's on page, yeah, I said 182. So on one, under A there, the part that bothers me is, and I spoke to this, I believe, a few weeks ago, that she can bring in the city, the county clerk to talk about signatures and sort of compare. But again, I'm going to state for the record that you don't have to be a registered voter to vote on this. So if I'm not a registered voter, my signature's not going to be with the county clerk. Period. Okay? That's Section 8. And then if we move to Section 11, tabulation of protests, it says she does not have, she does not have to open all of the votes if she determines that the absence of a majority of the protests without validating them are received, but instead doesn't deem them all valid without further examination. And I feel that that's kind of a violation of my vote. You know, I'm going to take the time to vote. I think they all ought to be opened and validated, whether they're yes, no, or maybe. I mean, you got to know, did they vote for water? Did they vote for sewer? Did they vote against both? So those are my comments there. The other thing I wanted to add is that on page 143, Item C1 states, at the end, by the way, of the Bartle and Wells, I keep wanting to say Bartles and James. In order to recover, and this is the very end, it's In order to recover, and this is the very end, it says, "In order to recover, the WRI facility surcharges via the property tax rolls, the city would need to follow the process identified in California Health and Safety Code, Section 5470 through 5474." Attached as an appendix, it was not attached. We had to look it up. It's six pages long. I'm not sure what part of that, their safety code section they're referring to. The process is similar to the Proposition 218 process required for, and I'm just a minute, required for increasing utility rates and could be done concurrently when the city goes through this proposition rate increase. Well, I just want to ask that question, if you could address that.
I understand. If you can submit that, I'd like to respect all the speakers, your time's up. Tina Metzger can come.
If you could answer that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Tina Metzger.
Good evening, council, staff. I just have one simple question, and a lot of people are wondering this. What exactly are you going to do if the 218 protest vote prevails and you won't get the money you want to build the project? I just want an honest answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Stevens.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Many of my notes, people have already spoken on. I do think that it's important to clarify what are eligible parcels and ratepayers? What if you have, have a non-conforming, two APN, two assessment parcel numbers and one structure on it? What about vacant land? The question earlier about city property, I think those are very pertinent. I think they're very honorable and well-meaning people that have just a variety of views all over the map here. And I appreciate all the efforts made here and everybody in the audience. You know, we all have varying degrees of viewpoint, but I'm very appreciative of what Bob was saying earlier, Bob Keller was saying earlier about Mr. Martoni's bidding process. I think that does very much come into play. And specifically, right now, the cost, I mean, when we say cost will go up, I'm not going to get back to my 215 fact sheet that I've been going on and on about for forever, but truly, in terms of the cost going up, I guess the bottom line for me is, yes, $75 million plus $125 million is $200 million over a three-year period that we are putting on the laps of our citizens, impacting businesses. I mean, think about this. You're talking in terms of, you know, $41 a month. Some people, that's their means of going out to having a lunch, visiting businesses in the area. And that's important. It's going to impact, obviously, low-income students, teachers, et cetera. But anyway, if I can get a clarification on the parcel and what Ms. Hawley said about trust and community is very, very important. It's very appreciate and appreciated. And finally, again, I'm, I was very taken by what Mr. Collins said earlier in terms of the First Nations people. Thank you very much.
Thanks. That concludes the public comment speaker slips. And with that, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And is everybody doing okay? Or do we need to take a little recess before we get into deliberation? Is everybody okay? Okay, we're going to keep going. John, are you still there?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
John?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Why don't we start with you first, if that's okay? Are you ready?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yep, thanks.
And if I get cut off, I apologize. I appreciate all of the information. I heard all of the public comments and was here a majority of the time, except for about two minutes when I got cut off. So, thanks to everybody who came out and continues to, I think, bring good ideas and thoughts to this process. I strongly support staff's recommendation, because it's my desire to protect our residents from future rates that will be untenable due to cost escalation, significantly increased cost of money or debt service, and fines that will be levied by the state water board. Primarily because of those reasons, I believe we must move forward with this 218 process. I believe that the 218 document itself that we have established allows for a process for the city's 218 vote that is transparent and facilitates, in my words, an appropriate outcome that embraces the democratic process. I feel that if there are further delays in the future, we will all suffer because of the excessive rates. The Blue Ribbon Commission that the community had the opportunity to review, the results up, did an excellent job in scrutinizing the significant details, the costs associated with the proposed rate increases. Every aspect of costs have been well evaluated, and it's my prediction that rates will probably come in lower because of the fact that we will receive SRS money. Because of those reasons, and because of the fact that Morro Bay being one of two communities in the county is not only continuing to offer a subsidy program, but to enhance that subsidy program for economically challenged consumers, I believe now is the time to move forward. Time is of the essence, because time is money. And I would move staff's recommendation for approval.
All right, John, thanks for that. We'll get into other comments from the rest of council. I just want to be clear, was that an official motion to approve staff recommendation?
It was.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. If you want to take a second and then continue on discussion.
I will second.
So, motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. And so, we're going to get into the rest of discussion on this. Yes, sir, Mr. Martoni?
Yes. Just for clarification to councilman Heading and the rest of the council, I want to make sure that we're focusing on what motion is being made. The councilmember Heading referenced the recommendation that's on the C1. The recommendation that's listed there doesn't include one of the items that's in the title, which is approving the Proposition 218 notice. And so, I just want to make sure that Mr. Councilman Heading was including that he was also moving to approve the notice that was in your package.
Thank you. And I know that we've, so I know we're in discussion, and then when we get back to the motion, as I understand it, we can clarify that now, but we want, we do, I definitely want to be able to revisit the motion and clarify that that's exactly as stated. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. We'll validate the motion as discussed. Red, do you have any discussion on this?
Why, yes, I do. There is a lot of information being circulated about the water reclamation facility project. Some of it is factual, some of it is opinion, and some of it is misinterpretation. So, I took some time this last weekend to research original documents and to make a list of basic true facts about the project. And Dana, I'd like to read these into the minutes, and I will give you a copy later. Fact one, on June 27, 2018, the Regional Water Quality Control Board wrote to the city stating that, quote, "The existing treatment plant infrastructure cannot achieve full secondary treatment for the loading flow rates of the service area," end quote. Fact two, a time schedule order, a TSO, issued by the water board on June 27 requires, quote, "Full compliance with final effluent limitations no later than February 28, 2023," end quote. Between now and then, the following milestones must be met. A Proposition 218 hearing no later than August 30, 2018. Award of contract for water reclamation facility onsite improvements no later than September 30, 2018, which is two and a half months from now. Award contract for lift station and off-site pipelines no later than November 30, 2019, which is next year. And completion of water reclamation facility improvements no later than December 30, 2022. If the city fails to comply with any provision of this TSO, it would be liable for mandatory minimum penalties. And here are the words of Harvey Packard, a supervising engineer with the Central Coast Water Board, in an email sent June 27, 2018, to Barry Brannon with a copy to the city, quote, "Certain violations of the NPDES permit trigger mandatory penalties of at least $3,000 per violation. It's likely that there will be several violations per month if the plant isn't upgraded by January 2023." So, mandatory penalties would be about $15,000 per month. However, the water board has the discretion to increase the penalty on each violation up to $10,000, which could cost the city up to about $50,000 per month." End quote. Those are mandatory penalties. Fact three, on January 10, 2013, the California Coastal Commission unanimously denied the city's request to rebuild a wastewater treatment plant west of Highway 1. Fact four, Dan Carl, Central Coast District Director for the Coastal Commission, wrote to the city on September 22, 2017, making the following points regarding any attempt to build or upgrade on the west side of Highway 1, and these are his words that I'm quoting. These sites would pose significant regulatory hurdles and challenges that would take more time and resources to address than would the inland sites. The commission already denied the city's proposed project west of Highway 1 in 2013. The commission has recently not given authorization for permanent infrastructure in these types of more hazardous shoreline areas. Sites inland of Highway 1, including its South Bay Boulevard, would not be subject to these types of conditions and restrictions, and thus would be able to meet the primary objective of finding a long-term home for the city's critical wastewater infrastructure in the shortest period of time with the most certainty in outcome. Both any potential local coastal program amendments and any coastal development permit applications would have to work through the same types of coastal hazards issues that eventually led to denial of the city's 2013 proposal after two years of process. Fact five, through a state-regulated RFP process, the city has selected the least-cost proposal that meets all the community goals for the WRF project. Fact six, the city is now asking ratepayers to approve water and sewer surcharges that add up to, but no more than, $41 to the monthly bill for the average household that uses 125 gallons of water per day. Those surcharges could be less if we get a state revolving fund loan or any of the grants that the city is applying for. Fact seven, the city has an established utilities discount program to assist low-income residents to pay their monthly bills. Only two cities in the county have programs that help low-income ratepayers. So, those are basic facts that we have to deal with. So, what will happen if the rate increase is defeated? And here's what I see as the probable effects of a defeat of the rate increase. One, the city will certainly lose low-cost loans from WIFIA and state revolving fund. The Regional Water Quality Control Board will very likely levy mandatory fines. The preferred contractor will withdraw its guaranteed maximum contract proposal to build the WRF project. And then, council will look for a way to reduce rates with very limited options. With beachfront sites denied by the Coastal Commission and regetti ruled out by neighborhood protest, the only way I can think of to reduce project cost is to eliminate water recycling and redesign the project. During this time, the construction cost index will continue to rise, bond interest rates will continue to go up, and eventually, the city will still have to ask ratepayers to approve rate increases to build a more expensive plant that does not add recycled water to the community's drinking water portfolio. The bottom line is, if a majority of we ratepayers vote against a rate increase now, we may well end up paying more later. So, here are some final true facts. The city is planning to build a WRF project that meets requirements of the Water Quality Control Board and the Coastal Commission. It is a project that satisfies community goals and is intended to provide a drought-proof water supply. The proposed surcharge has been reviewed by a Blue Ribbon Commission of Morro Bay residents and business owners, and they consider it reasonable. The project cost for the Los Osos Water Treatment Plant and piping infrastructure in 1988 was $57 million. Thirty years and a community bankruptcy later, Los Osos residents are paying off $193.7 million. If we don't learn from Los Osos history, then we will repeat their story. That's all.
All right, Matt?
All right, yes. In terms of preliminary, if you don't mind, I want to answer a few questions.
Yeah, thanks.
Maybe Rob and/or Scott, you guys, or actually Eric could also. What is the difference Mr. Martoni asked between a tax parcel and a legal parcel? Actually, Joe.
I think it's easier for me to answer it the way Prop 218 and the statutes that interpret and implement Prop 218 require the notices to go out and classify what properties are going to be, properties that require the notice, and therefore, those owners can vote. It's properties that are on the most current tax assessors, San Luis Obispo County tax assessors roles. If a parcel is on that role, that parcel is one of the parcels that will be counted toward the parcels, the total parcels that 50% plus one is needed for the successful protest.
So, by saying that, as long as they're on those tax rolls, that piece of property becomes a legal parcel?
Yes, with one exception that I addressed earlier. If the parcel is totally non-developable, which means it will never If the parcel is totally non-developable, which means it will never, ever, ever be able to benefit from the property-related service, meaning sewer and water, then that wouldn't be a parcel that's counted. How we're able to designate that is a little tricky, but that's a fact that we'll have to take into consideration.
Okay. And so this follows up with another question we had earlier about parcels that Marro Bay owns. How will that go forward with those parcels in the 218 process?
My experience with other 218 processes or assessment-type processes is the governing body decides whether they want to vote or protest the assessment or the rates.
So when you say governing body, does that mean then that it'll come back to City Council?
The City Council of Marro Bay.
Okay.
Put it another way, that those parcels are counted toward the total.
Sure, got it. And so when, at what time would that come to council to decide if we wanted to?
Right now.
Right now?
Or at the protest hearing.
Okay, got it. Is that it? Okay, got it. And there was another question. Ms. Headland asked about Spanish speakers. I have met at the Marro Bay High School English Language Advisory Council back in late May. I met with families there to discuss and kind of put out there what was going on with the WRF project because of that exact point you had pointed out in terms of the outreach for Spanish speakers. And so that's the one thing that I have done besides anecdotally when I speak with ratepayers in Marro Bay. And in terms of those are the questions, and then actually Ms. Metzger had another question also about, in terms of if the 218 is not, doesn't get enough votes, no, or does, what's the next process for them? Red? He commented on it.
I think Red, I think Councilmember Davis sort of outlined possibilities.
Okay, got it. Sure, try to say it again.
Here's what I see as a probable effect of a defeat of the rate increase. Number one, the city will certainly lose the low-cost loans from WFFIA and the state revolving fund. The Water Board will very likely levy mandatory fines. Our contractor will withdraw its contract and will be left without a contract. Council will look for ways to reduce rates with very limited options. Beachfront sites denied by the Coastal Commission, regettis ruled out by neighborhood protests. The only way I can think of to reduce project cost is to eliminate water recycling, which would cause us to redesign the project. Maybe other council members can think of other cost reductions. That would remain to be seen. In the meantime, as time goes on, construction cost index continues to rise, bond interest rates continue to go up. And remember, the bond is going to be our only source of funding once we lose WFFIA and state revolving fund. So eventually, we will have a redesigned project, and we will have to come back and ask the ratepayers to approve rate increases to build a plant that will likely be more expensive than the one we have designed now, that does not add recycled water to the community's drinking water and will be financed by higher-interest bonds. So the bottom line is that if the majority of ratepayers vote against a rate increase now, we may well end up paying more later.
Okay. And so with that, and I do believe I just asked the question about what an eligible parcel is, so Mr. Stevens, I think that answered your question. Okay, so those are the questions that I was picking up on during the public comment.
Since you're doing questions, there was Linda Donnelly had on Page 182 and 183 about votes, and there was an attachment that was not necessarily included. Rob, did you get that when she was talking to that?
Yes, the attachment regarding putting the rates on the property tax rule, which I think council had, through your straw poll last meeting, had ruled out. It's following the Health and Safety Code procedures for that.
Thanks for that clarification. And then on Page 182 and 83 about the votes, that kind of construed more, sorry, Matt, I just thought since you're, it seemed like we had a couple of questions as far as opening and opening some of the votes. It was more statements than I think questions. Did you catch that, Dana, is there something you can respond to?
Well, I can respond to that.
Okay, thanks.
It provides latitude to the city clerk to make a reasonable estimation if.
If there's three envelopes.
Right, then it's probably unnecessary, but if we collect a significant number, and we know that folks can submit more than one in an envelope, as long as one of the signatories isn't inside that envelope, that they're submitting on behalf of the others, that we would open them to make sure that we had a good count. But it's kind of using, allowing Dana to use her best judgment. And we can talk further about the process and how those ballots will be secured and kept confidential until such time that it comes forward to the hearing process.
Okay. Sorry, Matt, I know there's a couple of other questions, but go ahead. Sorry about that.
In terms of discussion for this item, I am for it. Red makes, you make a lot of points I totally agree with. I do believe going forward, this surcharge, $41, especially when we consider our yearly rate analysis, including our low-income rate assistance programs, I do believe that this is a very positive step going forward.
Thanks. Marla?
Well, I also support moving forward in approving the surcharges and setting August 28th for the public hearing. I do think we need to come back and have some discussion about the notice itself and some of the suggestions that were made, I think were good ones, and so maybe we can have that discussion after we do that, because I believe we're also approving the rate increase. Is that, I mean, the notice itself that goes out? Yeah, so we have to make any changes tonight? Right, okay. I just also wanted to say just a few words. Actually, Red did such a beautiful job of laying out the facts, of which I have some here that I was going to cite as well, but I won't do that. But I would like to just add a couple of points that maybe he failed to mention. You know, actually, it was ironically, the April 25th, 2017 meeting where the council put a pause on this project, and we made as the number one goal to reduce the cost of the project. And that's what we've been working on now ever since, and we did that throughout the process, and we have been very successful, as a matter of fact, in reducing the cost from $167 million to $126 million. And that is a pretty sound number. It's based on a guaranteed maximum price for the major facility and very good estimates for the rest of the project. So I'm very confident that we are actually going to be able to reduce those rates even further, and that depends on getting the WFFIA loan and then applying for the state revolving fund loan. So it's critical that we move forward at this point. I also wanted to add that when we put a pause on the project, we did go back and look at four additional sites, one of which was the Hanson property. And I personally talked to the Coastal Commission staff about the Hanson property, as well as the Dynegee property, which are two sites west of Highway 1. And they were quite clear that that was not going to fly, that those, that was, and they cited all of the reasons that had been in the Coastal Commission denial in 2013. And we know that the climate change is getting worse. There was an article in the paper just a week ago that was threatened, the whole coast of California is threatened, beachfront homes are threatened, treatment plants on the beach are threatened. And at the same time, there was an article about the drought and how Northern California and Southern California is going into a drought, and that threatens our water supply, which is, we've relied heavily on state water, and if we don't get our allocation in a couple of years, we would be in serious trouble. So we have to do recycling, and we have to do recycling to get the WFFIA loan. So it's just crucial to me that we move forward at this point, and I agree fully with Red's comments that if we don't, we're going to end up paying more later. And that's actually what the staff report showed, that if we don't do recycling and we have to go with all bond funding, we're going to be paying $44 without recycling. So it's just crucial that we move forward, I think, at this point. So those are my comments, but I would like to, as I said, go back and talk about.
Okay. Thank you. And we do have a little bit more discussion beyond the motion. And there's one other question about dwellings and apartments for parcels. Can you explain that one?
If the apartment dweller is a water sewer customer, meaning they get the bill, they'll be able to vote. If the apartment dweller is not one of those people, and the apartment dweller doesn't own the dirt upon which the apartment exists, they won't be receiving a ballot.
Okay, all right. I think that's clarified there.
I guess the question was, would they be charged? If they don't get the bill, they would not be charged?
By the, they wouldn't be charged by the city. I have no idea whether the landlord may charge them, but they're not going to be charged by the city, so they.
Right.
Okay, all right, thanks. Yeah, I think I've got some closing remarks. I'll just wait until following some of the discussion. I am in support of this. I appreciate everybody's comments from council. Thank everybody from the community coming out. I wish there had been more that could have stayed from, after hearing some of their comments. Sometimes I wish we could have had responded as well, but that's okay. You know, as we, as we go through, as we've gone through this process, Red laid a lot of things out during the last Thursday's special meeting where we reviewed rates. I don't see a Plan B that is proposed that reduces costs. We've gone through this, as Marla said, we evaluated sites west of the Highway 1, and the, it's, to a degree, it's a bit of a risk analysis. If you, if we really feel that a site can be built at Hanson's, and we want to take two years, which is very clear from the Coastal Commission on what it would take, the millions of dollars that it got us to get to this point, it would be equal to go the next couple of years. And then we wouldn't have water recycling, we would lose out all the financing that's clearly been stating, and then we're kind of rolling the dice on whether or not the Coastal Commission is going to approve the project. The risk analysis for me, and I think the rest of council, at least to where we are and unanimous on this, is that it's not viable. Coastal Commission, though they haven't made a ruling, that's because there isn't a proposed project. But they've made it very clear that the former proposed project that we had was denied. And why would we want to pursue trying to propose another project when one was already unanimously denied? It's a nonstarter, in my view, and it's not worth the risk. I think the risk is that the overall cost will go up, and we will be going through this process. What we really should be doing as part of this project, and largely because the WFFIA financing came up with a low-interest loan, really accelerated putting the water recycling on there, and that's a good thing, because timing-wise, there's a lot of things that are lined up that whether or not our D cell plant is going to be needing major overhaul to support us during shutdown periods. That's another expense that we need to be looking at. But we've also undergone the One Water Study. That One Water Study provided valuable information on what we should be doing for the community. The state water is not going to meet our needs as a community for build-out. We're going to have to have some source of water for build-out. And for a community that is at a pivotal point where we have to make a decision on what we're building for the future, this is a decision, which is water reclamation. That's part of our general plan. That's part, one of, part of, one of the reasons why it was denied before, because it didn't have a water reclamation component as part of the project before. There's been comments about the cost of the former project and the, and the lower cost of that project. Well, that was a cost estimate that was never validated, because we really never knew what the Coastal Commission may have approved with mitigation measures. There could have been millions of dollars of mitigational measures put on the cost of the project that we would never know. But those are still so many things that line up to why, personally, I wouldn't want to go back to visit the coastal project. I think we have enough evidence to support that it's not viable. And moving forward, the South Bay project that's been proposed is the most viable project for the city. We understand that the cost isn't as low as one would hope, but, you know, thinking about it the other day, the cost to pave a street in San Luis is the same to the cost to pave a street in Marro Bay, and we just have fewer residents to do that. But we've done the best we've can to be innovative and reduce the scope of the project. So getting back to the motion, we, John, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a staff recommendation, and that staff recommendation reads as follows. Approve the proposed water reclamation facility sewer and water surcharges and set August 28th, 2018 for the public hearing to consider and establish new water and sewer water rates. That's the motion on the table.
We're hoping that the motion includes and approves the Proposition 218 notice, which is in the title, which is in the title of the item.
Yes, yes, and I will make that as a friendly amendment. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Before seconding the amendment, I need to know the process we're going to go through to approve the notice?
Then may I just make a suggestion? An option could be to just take the motion.
Yes.
Of number one and two, and then go back and discuss the notice.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yes, I'm willing to do that.
Okay, so just to be clear, just to be clear.
Counselman Heading, understand that?
So Councilmember Heading made the motion, staff recommendation, and we made a friendly amendment to include.
He offered an amendment, but it wasn't seconded, so it hasn't been made.
Okay, so we'll go back to that. All right, so just to restate one more time, so the motion on the table is, approve the proposed water reclamation facility sewer and water surcharges and set August 28th, 2018 for a public hearing to consider and establish new water and sewer rates. That's the motion. Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. We've had our discussion. We'll do a.
Roll call, because we have a tele.
Councilmember Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember McAlweskey?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Irons?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the record, so that the public understands, we did a roll call, because the law requires a roll call if you have a teleconference member.
Thanks, thanks for the clarification. Now, to continue on, we've got some work to do still. So the additional motion that you spoke to, Mr. Penone?
It would be, looking at the title of C1, it's, the motion that will ultimately be necessary is to approve the Proposition 218 notice. You may want to talk about the changes you want to make to it before you make that motion or however you want to handle it, but that's ultimately what needs to happen.
Okay, so I think we need, so that one of the, so we want, we need to get to a motion to approve the Prop 218 notice, and I believe we need to get through some discussion, because we've had public comment discussion, and we've had, and Marla, I think, has said something.
I would suggest that if there are councilmembers that want to make changes to the notice that's in your agenda packet, propose them and then decide what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Marla, do you want to start on that?
Yes, let me begin by suggesting that I thought that Kristin Headland made a very good point, and I believe that that change should be made. Did we capture that on the ballot itself, the "it"? Did we capture that on the ballot itself, the "it" defining?
I, the way I would reword it, if I understood right, is I certify the information I provided on this ballot is true and correct.
Okay, good. And then there was a suggestion that we-
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to, I just want to do this one thing at a time, so-
Okay.
We're, we're talking about the true and correct statement-
On the ballot.
On the ballot.
On the ballot.
So, Finance Director Jen Cowan is pulling up the Word document, the Word version of this document, so she can make the track changes, do them very slowly, one at a time.
Oh, this is wonderful.
Yes. Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Jen, thank you, Scott, thank you, team.
So, last page, Jen. Okay, do you want to read it in?
In the bold version where it says, "I certify." We're going to change that to, "The information," it's going to, "I certify the information I provided on this ballot," and strike, "Have personal knowledge of all the foregoing," and "it," and then just leave, "is true and correct." So it's going to read, "I certify the information I provided on this ballot is true and correct." I can't read it from here. Does it say, "I certify the information I provided on this ballot is true and correct"?
Okay, great, thank you.
And then there was a suggestion that at the beginning of the notice, we put in the Spanish language the purpose of this and how they could actually access a Spanish version, which I think was also a good suggestion. I don't know how you want to handle that at this point, but, right here?
Another option was to send it to everyone in both languages. That's more expensive, and I'm not sure of how much time it's going to take to translate it. So there's two options. One is actually send the notice both in English and Spanish.
Is your mic on?
One option is to send the notice and ballot all in Spanish and English, and the other option is to put something, the first, in the beginning of the, the item saying, "If you want it in Spanish, ask for it."
I think it should be all in, I think we should have both.
If I could add in, I think if we're going to have this on one side, and I understand the timing of it is such, but if we could get it translated, just put on the other side. That would, um-
I think we would need two versions, otherwise this would be very confusion. If you have one side English, one side Spanish, right, because it's four pages total.
Okay, so two, so it sounds like there'd be agreement to have two versions and sent out at a time. Is there consensus to do that?
Yeah, I'm assuming that some work has already been done on that, because if we said that they would, we would send them one in Spanish, we would have to have a Spanish translated version.
Another notice, we, and I did to, we could put that, a notice and a visal at the beginning, saying, "If you would like to have this information in Spanish, please, here is, here it is, either on this website and/or a call," because I do believe, do we have staff members that could provide the translation?
We do, yeah.
I would not be in favor of that, because that adds an extra impediment, which to me is discriminatory.
Impediment in what way?
That it takes an extra step for a non-English speaker to obtain a copy of the ballot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I am in favor of sending English and Spanish to all houses.
I am too.
Yeah, okay. John, are you there on that? Okay, we're going to have to get John back on that. But so far, we've got four in favor of doing that, okay.
And then I'm wondering if there is someplace in the notice itself that we can clarify the difference between rate and surcharge, since we have apparently used these terms interchangeably. It is obviously a one-time charge, the surcharge, for the facility. And that was a suggestion that I actually was going to make to add the following sentence to Page 2, third paragraph, after the third sentence. If we can find that.
Page 176?
Yep, yep. So, this is, this would be after, the surcharges would be levied starting July 1, 2019, and would remain in effect until debt issued to finance the Wharf project is retired. And I would add, "The surcharge is a fixed cost and will not increase." Just to make it clear, that as long as this 218 is in effect, that the surcharge is a one-time charge.
That could work with it.
Well, monthly charge.
I think that's a different issue than what you first started with, saying something about rates and charge, the use of the word rate and charge.
Right, I, I, that's, that is something different.
Okay.
Yes. I would like to see a sentence that perhaps explains the surcharge is a one-time charge on the bill to pay, well, not a one-time, but monthly charge, monthly charge, to, to pay for the Wharf facility, and it is part of the rates. I mean, since we have used the term loosely, and I think it should be clear to citizens. Maybe you have language that you-
I was just going to suggest something to the, to the effect, after this sentence, to say, something like, the, the surcharge is a flat rate, or surcharge and rate are used interchangeably, or equivalent, or something like that, just to kind of clarify, rather than go through the whole document and either make it all surcharge or all rate, it's just essentially equivalent to a flat rate, it's semantic.
A flat, a flat rate?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so something like the, the surcharge is a-
The surcharge is a fixed monthly charge and will not increase.
Just a little nuance on that, that's only for residential. It's a variable surcharge for a commercial.
That's true, so it's not necessarily a flat rate.
Ah, I see.
But then surcharge and rate can be used interchangeably or something like that. That's a good point, Ron.
Okay, so that's probably not a good idea to add that, then, if it's not clear.
Maybe just equate rate and surcharge, I think. I guess there, yeah. Well, I guess the other thing is, there is a nuance on the, on the surcharge, in that it goes away after the debt service is paid.
Maybe that's what we should say, then.
It does say that, right? Yeah, it says that already.
In that same paragraph, it says that.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, do we need to include that sentence that you're requesting?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, but we do need to somewhere explain the surcharge is a flat rate that will, so we, it's clear what the, what a surcharge is versus the rate increase.
So maybe, maybe the, the change is, the surcharges are, are a rate that would be levied starting July 1, 2019, and would remain in effect until the debt issued to finance the Wharf project is retired. So maybe it's just a modification to that third, which I think is a third sentence. So Jen, will you be on the, that other sentence?
May I suggest maybe something that's simpler? Jen, could you go to the-
I'm having a hard time.
The very top of the document? Where the notice language is right at the top? Right there. What if we have that notice say sewer, flat rate, put the word "flat" in between sewer and rate?
And takeout surcharge?
No, leave surcharges.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, we can't say "flat," that's right. That's right, we can't say, sorry.
I, I think we're chasing it on this, I, I think we're okay.
It's defined as a rate surcharge, right there in that notice.
Right.
I agree with the mayor.
The surcharge is a component of the overall rate.
I think we're chasing it.
I think the notice already speaks for itself, the way it's written.
Okay. The other, one other suggestion was to bold the, the language that appears on Page 3 in the last, in the first paragraph of both the proposed Wharf sewer surcharge and the proposed Wharf water surcharges. The sentence is, "The city may be able to reduce the surcharges if it can further reduce Wharf project costs or obtain additional grants or low-interest rate financing." It was to put that in bold, so it stood out.
John, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then this is a, this is a very minor one, and it's on Page 3, the last paragraph, "Typical single-family home with five units." And then I have in parentheses-
Which page are you on?
The last, Page 3.
Okay, I'm on it, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Very last page, the last paragraph on both the proposed rate char, rate changes, oh, excuse me, excuse me, this, I'm wrong. Page 3, last paragraph, "Typical single-family home with five units," and in parentheses it says 100 cubic feet, just, i.e. 500, is that correct? It's, five units is 500, or 500 is?
Are you talking about the last paragraph, third sentence from the bottom?
Yep.
Five units, in parentheses, it says 100 cubic feet.
A unit is 100 cubic feet, so five units would be 500 cubic feet.
That's all, just to clarify, so that people don't understand, five units equals, i.e. 500.
And maybe make a further suggestion, in that same parentheses, say that 500 cubic feet per month is equivalent of-
How many gallons?
125 gallons per day.
Thank you, that's even better.
I think you need, you need to have both to be able to do the translation, because your water bill provides monthly unit consumption, not daily gallon consumption.
Right, right, very good, yeah, I like that.
So, Jen's typing away on this. 500 cubic feet.
Or-
Which is the equivalent of 125 gallons per day.
Good.
Okay, all right.
All right, that, that's it for me.
Anything else for, for corrections or additional language? So, so that's on- Okay, so, we've made four changes that I've, I've gone through, and that's, on the first pa, on the first page of that was basically the certify true and correct language. And then we wanted two copies, one in Spanish, one in English. And then on Page 3, we wanted to bold the last sentence in the proposed WRF water surcharges. And it's, and that's the last sentence, "The city may be able to reduce the surcharges," and that was in bold, and it's there. And then the next one, Page 3, is, on the bottom, it's the five units, which you have in red, and that reads 500 cubic feet per month, which is the equivalent of 125 gallons per day. Those are the changes, and if we're in agreement with those changes, we could, we would need a motion to approve-
Could I just add one?
No.
Well, this is, this is really easy. That, the line, "The city may be able to reduce the surcharges," appears in both the sewer surcharges and the water, as, and should be bold in both places.
It is.
Oh, good, thank you, I can't read.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
So, now we need a motion to approve the Prop 218 notice as corrected-
As amended, yeah.
As amended.
Plus Spanish?
And, and include a Spanish and English notice-
Together.
-to be delivered to the proposed ratepayers and parcel owners.
Okay. I'll, I'll do that.
So-
Second.
I move, I move.
So, motion and a second.
I haven't made the motion yet.
No, you said, okay.
All right, I'm going to say it.
All right, go ahead and say it, then.
I move that we approve the 218, what is it called?
Application.
Application.
Notification.
Notice, as amended, and produce a Spanish version along with an English version.
That was simple, okay. I think that was simple.
And just a second, because of the fact we're going to have two versions, we don't need, at the top of Page 4, we don't need that, that box. The box that says, "If you want it in Spanish, ask for it."
Ah, and eliminate the box that says, "If you want it in Spanish."
Okay.
Should we read it again?
Yes, do it again.
So, so we've made, we've made a couple of amendments, and the amendments are, the one is the certify true and correct language that's been changed. We're going to have two, two notices, in Spanish and English. On Page number 3, we bolded the language that Jen is getting, and it's right there, and that, that language is, "The city may be able to reduce the surcharges if it can further reduce the WRF project costs or obtain additional grants or low-interest rate financing." And the next change is, that's the 500 cubic feet per month, which is the equivalent of 125 gallons per day, on the bottom of Page 3. And that's, that's all we had. And we reduced, and we eliminated the Spanish box on the English ballot, because we're going to have two, two of them. Okay, so that's what we've, that's what we've made the motion on.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Did we also make a change to add flat rate on the notice?
No, we did not.
No, we did not, okay, thank you. Just clarifying, thank you.
All right, so, the motion stands-
Yes.
Approve the Prop 218 notice as amended-
Correct.
With Spanish and English, and all the amendments we've just discussed.
Second.
So the, the motion, the motion was by-
John, I already did.
Ms. McPherson. The second was by Mr. Heading. Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to keep track of all this. And is there any further discussion?
Roll call.
Then we'll do a roll call vote.
Do you mind if I read back the motion the way I took it down?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Because there was a lot of discussion after that, and I think that leads to confusion.
Thank you.
What I heard was Councilmember McPherson moved to approve the 218 notice as amended and produce a Spanish along with an English version, and eliminate the box that says, "If you want it in Spanish." And that motion was seconded by Councilmember Heading.
Yes. That would include all the amendments.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, with that, I'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Makawetzky?
Yes.
And Mayor Irons?
Yes.
The vote carries five votes.
Thank you, Dana, thanks staff for that. Are there any other discussions or motions needed for this? I just want to give one brief statement on this. I just had some closing remarks, if you would enlighten me, and just allow me, I just have brief, brief remarks I wanted for this. First of all, I wanted to thank the staff and the WRF team that has worked on this project and bring it to today's decision for approval of the Prop 218 process. This is very important to be able to treat wastewater to the standards and quality required by the Regional Water Control Board. by the Regional Water Control Board and produce recycled water. Clean water standards are there for the health and safety of our society and our environment. Clean water is the right thing to do. This action follows five years of extensive public engagement and input to define the goals for the project, review and select a site amenable to the residents, and create a project that offers the best value for the community today and into the future. Due to the innovative aspects of the project, the city qualifies for low-interest loans that will not only give the city a needed new potable water supply, but also lower-cost financing. This is a legacy project that our next, our next generation will be proud of, and we should be proud that the new building, that we are building, the next generation, pardon me, I'm gonna start over that, this is a legacy project that our next generation will be proud of, and we should be proud that we are building with the next generation in mind, that will help grow our economy and protect our resources. Just for all the work, I think it was necessary to make that statement, and if there's any other closing remarks from council, we can just move on to our next item. John?
Thank you, Mayor, for that.
Okay. If there's, if there's not any other comments, we'll go ahead and conclude this, and we can move on to the next item.
And Mr. Heading is gonna-
And, and Mr. Heading, you're gonna disconnect at this point, is that correct?
Yes, and one, one disclosure, Mr. Penoni, the notice has been appropriately, been displayed here where I am, and there's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. That concludes item C1, and we'll move on to item C2. Item C2 is consideration and direction regarding installation of additional fire pits in the North Morro Bay Rock parking lot, and we're looking for Mr. Collins on this.
Yeah, thank you. Ready to go?
Yes.
All right. Okay, um, so, City Council, gosh, a couple, couple months ago, had, had directed under kind of the future agenda items for staff to come back with, maybe a proposal to look at placing additional fire pits in the North Morro Bay parking lot, in the designated areas that had been established, uh, prior. The city purchased three fire pits in 2016-17, approximately 190 bucks each, plus $100 shipping for each one of the concrete fire pits. The city created five designated fire pit areas that conform with the Fire Code and Municipal Code sections that relate to fires, open fires, section 9, 24, 110, and 1408090. One fire pit was installed in 2017, on the north side of the North Rock parking lot, and again, you know, City Council recently requested review of the, the fire pits and consideration of placing additional fire pits in the designated areas. With respect to the Municipal Code and Fire Code, to simplify how fire pit rules are kind of abided by in the city, they must be constantly attended to, they shall not exceed three feet in diameter and two feet in height for safety purposes, only fueled by natural wood, charcoal, or commercial logs, again, for safety purposes, and that ashes, ashes must be left in the pit and not in trash receptacles for obvious reasons. Issues for consideration, the existing fire pit has not created significant safety issues or attractive nuisance issues, which sometimes can be associated with fire pits, especially fire pits in close proximity or on a beach. Having grown up in San Diego and, and places like Oceanside that allow for, for those on the beach, they, they can sometimes lead to, not necessarily legal activity, but nuisance issues that create a problem for police and fire. We haven't experienced those issues with the one fire pit that's in place. It does tend to accumulate trash from time to time, and so the consolidated maintenance staff does clean it out routinely. The Harbor Advisory Board looked into the matter in June of 2018, they didn't provide a formal recommendation, but there was kind of unanimous consensus that they supported the placement of additional fire pits in the designated areas, and that maybe using volunteer help to keep the, the new fire pits and existing fire pits clean of trash. So basically, the questions for council, and of course, we can answer any questions you have beyond these, but, does council favor installing additional fire rings? If yes, how many pits should be added? And any, any thoughts about the specific locations to move them to? Are there, is there interest in modifying or adding further limitations to the municipal codes that are associated with fires, public fires? Staff, as far as recommendations are concerned, we're kind of silent on whether placing more in the North Morro Bay parking lot, but we would not recommend putting them on the beach for the reasons I stated earlier, just creating a new, attractive nuisance issues, and also being in close proximity to very sensitive habitat in the dunes. So that's our brief presentation, happy to entertain questions that council may have.
Great, thanks Scott. Questions for staff? Red?
Scott, excuse me, how many fire pits did you say we still have that we have not placed?
We, we purchased three, one was placed, so we have two yet to be installed that are in the corp yard.
Okay, and they were $190 apiece?
190 each, plus 100 shipping. Yeah, because they're very heavy.
So that would be approximately $400 each. Is that correct? Wait, 190?
190 each, yeah, so you could, if you were to resell them, you could, yeah, yeah, get money back, I guess?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay. Oh, sorry, so the cost, total cost for each is 300, if you, if you factor in the shipping.
If, yes, if we, if we were to purchase more, because you are showing us five locations, five potential locations, for only two fire pits.
That's right, and those areas were, were pre-established as designated fire locations, and if you were to survey them, you would see that they're basically use rock boulders to create a buffer zone between the fire pits and cars that would be parked in the parking lot, to establish that, the appropriate buffer that the fire department has reviewed and approved for future use. While there are five locations, one of which is already occupied, we have two at our disposal you could pick between any of the four that remain.
And which one of these five locations is already?
The one at the closest, let's see, on the, closest to the beach on the, near the restroom, would be the-
Okay.
-where the first and only is located.
Okay, that's all my questions, thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Um, yes, and so, to this point, at this point, Scott, with the one pit that's been placed there, have, we have not had any issues from staff about maintenance and/or cleaning?
None that I'm aware of, you can ask the Public Works Director, Rob Levick, if, if there's been other issues. We had the Fire Marshal look at it again, probably two or three months ago, when this was brought to our attention, says, "Attention by community members is of potential interest," and just to make sure the designated areas were still in conformance with the Municipal Code and Fire Code, and it was deemed to be so.
Are the, both of the areas on the north side of the parking lot and then on the bay side, are those in, do they conform with those same regulations?
Yes, yes, all five of those spots were kind of pre-designated, and then, again, Fire Marshal checked them again recently, and they all, they all continue to meet the appropriate Fire Code and Municipal Codes, or relevant Fire Municipal Codes.
So, Red just asked a question about how much these pits cost in terms of placement, are we looking at a, how much cost-wise for staff to place these?
I mean, it would be, you know, using staff time, there is some installation costs as far as ceiling and some cement, the bottom, I don't know if there's a, if you could put an estimate on that.
I haven't bought a bag of quickcrete in a while, but it's about a bag per, um, fire pit, so maybe 10 bucks for materials, um, couple bucks in base, because we fill the fire pit halfway up with base, and then put a concrete bottom in it. These are basically manhole grade rings that, um, are sold as fire pits also, so, and to meet the depth requirement, we need to fill up the base, concrete it in, and, um-
Well, looking forward and looking at future groups that could be enlisted to keep clean for these, um, various fire pits, would that be something that could be sent back to the HAB, Harbor Advisory Board to, or, or do we go on a public outreach to find groups to?
It could be part of, if there was a group that wanted to adopt something, the council recently-
I guess, I guess that's when it came up.
Approve the adopt, we could have an adopt a pit.
Well, this did come up, and we've already had one group that wants to adopt a pit, and that is the Astero Base Surf Club, and so that's what I'm looking at, is like, okay, we're-
So we already have a, a, a program to do that.
Got it, so in terms of adoption of these fire pits, we would go through that process and those interested groups then would just go through that?
Correct.
Got it, okay, that's all my questions.
Thank you. Marlis?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think I asked some, some of these questions ahead of time, so I knew there were three, um, and I was kind of curious, I was remembering when they went, the first one went in, and it was somewhat controversial, as I recall, people wondered where they came from and who approved them, and it wasn't the council, so, just for a little memory. Do we have any sense of how much they're used? I'm assuming if maintenance has to clean out the ashes, we have some sense of, are they actually, is it, I guess the one, is it used?
Um, there's ashes in it every, um, I know every weekend, Monday morning, they're, they're cleaning out ashes out of the pit. When they were first installed, there was a bit of trash problem, because at the same time we put out the pits, we removed the trash cans from, around the perimeter of the Rock parking lot, so, people have gotten used to going to the dumpsters now, it appears, and they're less of a trash problem.
Okay, and I, I assume there's no way we could dispose of these now, that we probably can't return them after two years, but, uh-
Well, if we could, there's a 25% restocking charge-
I see, okay.
And we have to pay 100 bucks a piece to ship them back to Santa Maria.
I see, okay, thank, thank you for that, those are my questions.
Okay. This question is for our fire chief. I just wanna understand, do you have any concerns during fire season on, or hesitation, if there's some concern, you know, can you shut that down and just say, "Hey, no fires today"? Is there anything like that? Have you thought that through?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm council, and good evening. Uh, yeah, in the Fire Code, it does allow me to put down any fires in our community if I seem to be hazard. If we do have a red flag alert on the beach, I simply would have to have Harbor Maintenance or ourselves put some signs out and say, "No fire in this pit," just like when you go to a campground, sometimes they don't allow fires in their fire pits.
Okay, all right, thanks. Those are all the questions I have, I just have comments and discussion, is there any public comment for this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Matt, you wanna lead us off for discussion?
Sure, um, when this, um, item came up, it was brought to me as the liaison to Harbor Advisory, and, like, where are fire pits? And this, and so, that's hence my motivation to bring it to council, then bringing it back to HAB. At the Harbor Advisory Board, um, meeting when this was brought up, there was no formal recommendation, but there was consensus, 100% consensus across the board, and that includes, if, I mean, Eric Endersby is not here right now, but if I could channel him a bit, he, he has voiced that, he was very leery when this started, that, that these were gonna be problematic at the Rock parking lot, with partying, with whatever sort of trash, and that has not manifested. And so, when this came up, to me, I thought, all right, you know what, it's true, we've had, as Marlis, you point out, these were kind of put in, didn't come to us, and this trial period, it's sort of worked, so, um, I think going forward that it would be, could be a very positive thing to have. Back in the day, people would just have their fires wherever, and this way, this would be one way to manage that, so, there you go.
Red?
Yes, I was just checking my contacts, when the fire pit first went in, I had three people who emailed saying, "What the heck's going on, and this is kind of dumb." And then, um, sometime after the fire pit was there, they emailed back and said, "Well, we love it." So, um, I am happy to place the other two pits that we have, I would rather hold off on buying anymore, mostly as, as a symbol that, um, we don't just spend money, so.
Okay. Marlis?
Well, I appreciate that the council was consulted this time around, and I, I would agree with my colleagues, we have already paid for them, we might as well place them, and we can certainly revisit if we have issues in the future, but I would agree, I wouldn't purchase anymore at this point.
Okay, I would agree and support the three, as they are designated on our staff report on the Rock parking lot. Just for a future note, I know there's two arrows over, on the harbor side, you know, I was prepared, if there was discussion, to go for more as a caution, there's a, that's kind of a viewing area for sea otters, and I, I, instinctively, I thought, you know, that's probably an area that would be better served where there'd be no fires, and just kind of leave it designated, because it's fairly well-attended in that way, so those are just my thoughts, but, um, maybe for future discussion, if this came up, we should definitely be contacting some of those people there, because I imagine if it just landed there, we might hear from it after a fact, but I'm pleased with the three as proposed in the Rock parking lot, but, you know, two more in the future, I would probably not support two in the other area where the otters are, kind of a viewing area.
So the preference is to place them on the beach side, the other two, on the designated, pre-designated areas that don't currently have a fire pit making its home there, that we would place the two in those spots, is that right?
That's the way, I'm looking at the, the map here, that, with the arrows, the arrows that are pointing to the-
The beach side.
-the beach side.
Okay.
Not, not the Otter Rock viewing area.
No, they're, they're not here.
Okay, all right, so, so we need, Matt, you wanna make a motion to approve these two as placed on the beach side of the parking lot there?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to, um, place these additional two fire pits on the north side of the Rock parking lot as designated or close to the arrows provided on our picture.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. McCowetsky, second by Miss McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carries 401. Okay, that means one abstained because he was not in attendance. Okay, all right, good, thanks, just checking it, everything out, and now, last item on the agenda is item C3, and this is a 2018 city goals and objectives status update, and Mr. Collins, thanks for bringing this to council.
I think I can read this, okay. So, City, City Council has gone through a couple iterations of the goals and objective setting process, beginning a couple years ago, and the, the ultimate idea is to kind of focus the additional capacity that city staff and the organization and leadership has beyond their day-to-day duties to push forward initiatives that help achieve very important community goals. The ones that were established a couple years ago still hold true and were moved forward by City Council in the 2018 process for the calendar year, the, the five of them, the four of them that were already established and a fifth was added, the first being achieve economic and financial sustainability, the second, which we just went through earlier this evening, is to complete the WRF project and more water plan, ultimately to set us on a course towards, um, meeting important water quality control or Water Quality, Clean Water Act requirements, but also setting ourselves on a sustainable path forward for water. The third goal is to improve infrastructure in public spaces. in public spaces. When this was originally created, there was some concern about cleanliness in the public, but as well as just investing in our infrastructure, as our community infrastructure continues to age, and we haven't been adequately able to fund important infrastructure improvements. The fourth goal, which will really be coming forward to city council in a big way, and later this year, is to review and update significant city land use plans, is we have a lot of discrepancies between our local coastal plan, general plan, and zoning code. It's a laborious process, hard to understand from developers, and even folks trying to do simple modifications to their home, and really trying to set us on a path forward. Looking into the future, next 20 years, what is our community going to look like? So having a uniformity across those three important land use plans that reflects the values of the community is a very important thing to aspire to. And we'll talk a little bit more about the progress made in that. And then the last goal, the one that was added this year, was to improve communication to the community. That is not just one-way communication, that's really kind of 360 degrees, engaging participation, ensuring that the community's informed on important items such as the WRF and general plan. As far as the goals process, like I said, most of the goals have several objectives, and more importantly, the action items, that if they're carried out, should help move the needle in a good direction towards achieving those goals. The action items, there were 30 identified for this year, and prioritized for the calendar year. These are discrete actions that you can actually tangibly measure whether they were achieved or not. Staff committed, at the same time that council took this up in February, to providing regular updates about progress. And this would be the first one, as we, I think we said at that time, July would be the time we would bring forward the first update. That way we could get through the budget and some other big, heavy items to carry forward. And council generally approved the goals and objectives in February, and requested a few slight modifications prior to adoption. So tonight would be really a formal adoption of those goals and objectives. So there was consensus across the board about the action items, so we've still been moving forward under the guise of city council's direction. Let's see here. Oh, great, can't see this. I thought this would be much bigger than it is, but it is in the staff report. Now, this is really focused on, there's the 30 items, the action items that were identified. I have three slides before you. The first would be the items that we've completed. The next slide would be those that have made, we've made significant progress. And the third slide would be those that we haven't made much progress on, and hope to through the remainder of 2018. I'll read through these, because I can see them. The first item is related to fiscal sustainability, and that's kind of creating a balanced budget. Looks at kind of all of our costs, including staffing, which we did through the fiscal year 18, 19 budget development, process development. We also included beyond staff and leadership, looking closely at all our costs, we engaged for the first time in an employee group of all kind of stripes and departments and levels, to also look at our budget, and look at some of our assumptions, and also come up with recommendations as we come to grips with CalPERS liabilities. So that, we count as complete, though, as one of our councils. I think Councilmember McPherson said, that's an ongoing thing, and absolutely true. Every year, we strive to create a balanced budget, and there's more that we can always do to improve on that. But we did, we were able to check off part of that. Marijuana tax on November 2018 ballot, council approved that moving forward for the 18 November general election. MOU with the chamber to implement the economic development plan, council approved that in June. Create a WRF budget, we did that through the budget process for this year. WRF design build, city council's directed to move forward with preferred proposer. Watersuit rate study for the WRF completed. Utility discount program updated, yes, and we updated again. Hire new WRF program manager, I think he's here tonight. Refresh the volunteer program, adopt a thing program. We're done with that, and moving forward in implementation. Action items with significant progress. So these are those that we've made strides, that we can't check them off the box just yet. The first is the offshore wind farm opportunity. The team that's working really hard to move this forward is with the Department of Defense, Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, the Fisherman Association, the local Fisherman Association, working very closely with city staff and others to just have this thing proceed smoothly, and make sure that whoever wins the potential bid for that offshore wind farming off the coast of Morro Bay, that there would be a significant community benefit, including economic to the city and the community. So there is significant progress. We hope to have an update to council in fall. Review of tourism, and consideration of vacation rentals being added to the T-bid. We did a pretty exhaustive review of tourism efforts to date, both of those that predated city taking it over, and then since that time. We do owe council an item later this year that looks at adding vacation rentals or other businesses into the T-bid that benefit from tourism marketing. That will come later this year. Community choice energy feasibility study, city council directed staff to move forward in partnering with the city of Slow. We have a preferred proposer on doing a deferred compensation model, where they would do all the work upfront to set up a community choice energy between the city and the city of Slow, and they would be reimbursed after the program goes live and we're receiving revenues, so it wouldn't impact the city general fund in any way. City council will be provided an update, and a kind of a go-no-go decision in September of 2018. I've heard that Paso Robles is also very interested in potentially joining, which would add another 30,000 to 40,000 rate payers to that. So that would significantly help the overall community choice energy program if they do that. And I heard maybe other cities may be inclined to join too. The WRF EIR, Planning Commission, WRF CAC approved the EIR to move forward to city council. Council will take that up in August this year. We've submitted in the process of submitting the application to WIFIA, SRF loan application would, as we discussed earlier tonight, would only move forward after several other things checked off. Complete the one water plan, council's reviewed both the capital side and the water supply options. That will come back for formal adoption in September. Complete the general plan, local coastal plan, zoning code update. That's all coming back in September, October of this year for council. Improve our website, and there's no council action required, but we have been making strides to do that, both with the city website and providing more timely updates, at least under the hot topics category, and also on the WRF, the separate WRF website, we're trying to provide more regular updates for the community. Implement the marijuana ordinance. We initiated the application process for the two permits that council has approved for, sorry, medical marijuana use only. And we've already received one application, along with $18,000 deposit, and I think another one's coming. Let's see, enhance accountability of goals and communication of process towards those goals. Tonight would be the first of many updates to council, and we'll also improve kind of the visibility and readability of the goals on the city webpage, because they're currently not there for 2018. And then we lastly have the action items that require much more time and thought and work from city staff. The fiscal emergency plan, council will review preliminary discussions that staff are putting together in packages around kind of what are the various trigger points by which, you know, that we have sliding revenue or escalation in expenditures, or some other catastrophic issue that was unplanned for, how we address those, and the various tiers or phases in which we would address those issues. We want to bring that back to council sometime in the fall, as well as some other kind of general fiscal policy or financial policies that council has requested in the past. Expanded revenue options, there was a lot around kind of parking and other sources of revenue. So we'll have a fee study contract for council consideration in August 2018. And we're looking at parking management, maybe coming back in the fall or winter. Parking and wayfinding, again, just mentioned the parking, but the wayfinding, we're using the newly formed partnership with the chamber to go out to the four business corridors or business areas in the community, and work with those who show up to those discussions to talk about branding and creating a uniform wayfinding system, so people can know how to kind of navigate, not only to the most obvious sites in town, including the Rock. Some people can't find the Rock, believe it or not. And sometimes, you know, if you tried to find it, you know, if you live here, it's obvious, but if you're not from here, it could actually, it could kind of be a circuitous route to get there. So creating obvious pathways for that, but also linking the various business districts, you know, Quintana, North Morro Bay, who maybe don't always get the ancillary tourists from, that come to embark there on downtown. So connecting the various corridors together, and that's something we're going to work on really hard this year with the four business groups, areas. The Morro Bay Aquarium site, we believe we'll have something ready for council consideration in fall, at least new information. The Central Coast Aquarium hired a new CEO, and they are in work to contract for feasibility study. And then the lease management policy, and this is related to the, and financial policy, our partnership policy, this is related to our lease management. Kind of a big kaleidoscope of issues all rolled into one. You know, when we enter into financial partnerships, do we have the criteria by which to correctly or comprehensively assess the viability of that partnership? Related to lease audits and evaluation, do we have appropriately staffed harbor department, or finance department, whoever, to conduct these audits, and go beyond just the financial audits, but also see if the agreements that we put in place are being abided by in terms of construction or maintenance or other components of the lease sites. So that would be a big package to bring back to council. And, you know, it's a heavy lift, we got a lot of things to do, but, you know, we're trying to commit to bringing it back in fall this year, at least the initial stages of discussion. There's another one about internal, external coordination on homeless issues. Again, this isn't necessarily anything that would require council action, but the police chief has stepped up efforts to connect with community connections and other partners in the community, how do we coordinate on homeless issues, but also looking internally, how do we coordinate within ourselves to address those issues more comprehensively and towards positive results. Complete the acquisition of the preferred WRF site, that would commence after the IR is completed. The RFQ process for the boatyard, I think there's a process underway for potentially a financial feasibility RFP, not an RFP for the boatyard itself. That would be coming back to council in the fall. Conduct assessment of the city's outreach engagement efforts, that's ongoing. I looked into what it would cost to hire a third party or professional to do that full assessment. It'd be $20,000 to $30,000. Didn't feel it was appropriate to bring forward during the budget discussion, considering all the things we have to do, and that we can probably do the assessment on our own. Of course, implementing the things we want to do based on the assessment is the challenge. And so we're trying to do the best we can, bit by bit, and make improvements over time. And lastly, is the partnership policy, and this is more broadly just looking at, you know, how do we, what are our policies around city facilities that we lease, thinking about the visitor center, looking at kind of special events and recreation programs. And this sort of falls into the broader fee study as well. So we're just really trying to create a uniformity of policies, so that council can provide high-level guidance about how we handle those situations. So that would hopefully come back in the fall of 2018. So that, in a nutshell, is the 30 action items. We've made good progress on some, others were in the middle, and others we just haven't had the chance to get to, but that would be expected that we're in July, halfway through the year. I feel pretty good about where we are. So hopefully, council will have questions and thoughts about the progress, and things maybe want to move ahead of others, but also adopt the goals and objectives formally, and then provide any other direction that you may have.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Scott?
Yes.
Red?
Yes.
Thank you.
We saw in the newspaper that City of Arroyo Grande last week had to take some steps to deal with a budget deficit. And there but for the grace of God, you know, that could, that might be us sometime, because CalPERS, next year, we're going to get our first real hit, the full $350,000. So I am particularly interested in the fiscal emergency contingency plan and sustainability plan. So I just want to throw that out there. And I do have a question about the vacation rental ordinance, which is on the third page of the goals. The date, you said the ordinance would likely come to us in May of 2018. Is there another date that is more reasonable than that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember McPherson caught that one too. That was just an oversight of my part. I think it's probably more safe to say the fall. I don't know if we have a specific date in mind.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Good catch.
No worries. Okay, so, that fell by hand. Matt?
Yes, Scott, looking at all of these and understanding, when you talk about, we pared these down in the last few years significantly. And I understand, because looking at each one, there is very valid. Do you have suggestions for ones that perhaps should not survive?
I mean, they're all, like I said, they're all worthy goals, and they, I mean, action items that connect to the goals that council's held over multiple councils, not just the current. So it's hard to, as a staff member, to say what you should prioritize. It's just-
Well, I guess what I'm looking at right now is on page 200. Goal number two, letter F, complete the acquisition of the preferred site for the WRF project. Is that not kind of an unsaid goal of the WRF project, and do we necessarily explicitly have to list it here?
Yes or no? I mean, we still have to do it. Yeah, right. And it still will take significant resources. But it's on the same path, you know, so whether it's listed here or not, we'll do the work. Yeah, if the 218 proceeds.
Other than that, I don't have any, because I understand so many of them, so I don't have any to take off.
Okay, thanks. Matt, Marlis?
Yeah, I asked my questions ahead of time. I had some quibbles about what it meant to complete a project, some of which I think are more ongoing, but I'm happy to keep it the way it is. Do you think that we will be able to accomplish these by the end of the fiscal year, the ones that we haven't made progress on? And you know more about the schedule, and how much we can accomplish in a single meeting, and what the staff can accomplish. So are we going to perhaps need to revisit these, let's say in three months, and maybe knock some off, or push them into the future, or something of that sort?
That's an excellent point, and something which council may want to hold open for three months, when we provide the next update.
Right.
You know, I think we're comfortable probably hitting the mark with the, with most of the action items that have significant progress. The other ones that don't, it would be a challenge, but that doesn't mean it won't be done. But I think in three months, we'll have a really clear idea.
Right. Well, I noticed that you said a lot of these things would be done in September, and so I'm thinking, well, we've got October, November, December, but those are, we missed meetings there, so.
That's true.
Yeah.
You know, when I say fall, I mean, that fall really largely means the rest of the calendar year.
Right.
The winter starts in December, towards the end, so most would have to follow August, September, October, November.
Right, right. That's right. We get a new council in December. All right, that was, that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. You had the one slide on the signs, was that for the wayfinding signs or the sign ordinance?
That is wayfinding specific.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know that there's been discussion about creating kind of uniformity between branding, wayfinding, and then signage, which isn't necessarily wayfinding.
Yeah.
But generally, we're trying to apply more consistency. Now, as I mentioned, there's four business districts that are all going to want some unique identifier.
Sure.
But there would be a common theme that- But there would be a common theme that weaves amongst them so that there is continuity, so from a visitor or resident, there'd be, it would just be intuitive.
Yeah.
And I understand there's concern that our branding would be connected in some shape or form so that it isn't just a hodgepodge.
Yeah.
The wayfinding is a standalone component of that, but I think discussions that you and I've had and the discussions at council really reinforce the point of all these things need to have something common so that it makes sense and doesn't look kind of messy.
Okay, and has there been any more, I notice there's more sandwich board signs popping up on Main Street, has there been, and has there been any complaints on that? And I know we went through, we've gone through fits and spurts of that's not allowed, then it kind of gets silent and it's popped up. Have you got any stuff from that?
That is Scott Graham item, I'll have to look into it.
So, something maybe we could follow up on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then on the, one item for the T-bid, pardon me, so the, it says overall evaluation of tourism, including vacation rentals, RV parks, business improvement districts, assessment options, also include information on partnership with Visit Slow bid. Oh, I would make a motion to go past 11 o'clock so we can finish this item.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. John?
He's not here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Ah, thank you. It's just, we're almost done.
Yeah, come on.
We're almost done, thank you. Okay, so the partnership with Visit Slow, is, how involved is that? Is that something that Chuck will come out and give us some information on?
Yeah, either Chuck or associate could come. They did come to the semi-annual review in March, so we could certainly have a repeat of that, see if we can get Chuck to come out, he's pretty fantastic.
Okay, that'd be great. I don't have any more questions, and I don't know if there's any more public comment. None? We'll bring it back, and so basically, this is a receive and file, and any other recommendations that might, we might want to add to that? I'm fairly comfortable with the direction that we're going and outlined.
Yeah, I would just add that we, while council provided, you know, they approved the council goals and objectives, they did ask for clarification on a few points, which we've done for approval. I think we thought we were going to do that during the budget, but just didn't, it just wasn't explicitly stated, so.
Okay, so we want to formally adopt them right now?
Yes, even though it's halfway through the year.
I move that we formally adopt the goals and objectives.
For 2018.
For 2018.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. McPherson, to adopt the goals and objectives.
For 2018.
For 2018. Discussion?
Sorry. Discussion, yes, in terms of do we have to put in there, Scott, for a three-month evaluation?
If you want to provide that explicit direction, otherwise, we did commit to that when they were approved.
So that's already in there that we will be bringing it back three years?
Okay, every quarter.
Three months, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0-1. Thanks, Red.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate this, and I really like seeing it, and I like seeing progress, and I like seeing that we're working on it, so thank you.
How much weight?
No, thank you.
Okay, so our next, are there any other comments, closing comments for tonight? We have future agenda items, anything for future agenda items? None? Our next regular council meeting will be Tuesday, August 14th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m., so we will be going dark at our next council meeting, and hopefully, everybody will enjoy the time off, and we'll be back for the August 14th meeting, and we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you.